We are now live.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight at the Santa Rosa City Schools Board of Education meeting for October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and we are going to begin this night with Reina Cruz, who is our student, who will be giving our land acknowledgement tonight. I just want to give a little introduction for Reina. Is Reina here? She in the family yet?
Attendants are still populating, so she should show up shortly.
All right, while she's showing up, I'm going to speak about her. She was born in Santa Rosa. She is a Lakota Pomo Chicano Aztec member of Round Valley Indian Reservation, a youth leader and an activist. At age ten, she was awarded a certificate of Congressional recognition for community service. She's also attending the JC, competitive soccer player, a daughter and a sister. She grew up being the only child in board meetings and protest with her mother, standing for her people and being of service. Oh, she's a graduate of Santa Rosa High School. Got that. She facilitated her native club, and she's a youth board member to the California Rural Indian Health Boards in Sacramento. And she works it in Wally's Garden, if you want to go take a look and see her. So Reina, are you are you here and ready to go? She is just, oh, there she is.
Hi, everyone. I'm in the car today because my house is having some construction right now, but.
Okay, so Reina, I just introduced you. So you now have the floor to go ahead and do that land acknowledgement for us, and thank you so much for being with us tonight.
Of course. Hello, my name is Reina de Cruz. I want to acknowledge that we are located on the ancestral home of the Southern Pomo people, past, present, and future. We recognize them as the first people and the first stewards of this land. We are on occupied territory and acknowledge the ongoing devastation of colonization.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it, and good luck at your college career and all that you're doing, and I'm going to come see you in Wally's. All right, thank you, Reina. Let's please stand together and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm going to take a moment to ground us tonight, as I usually like to do. Together here as a community, we believe this is very, very important, and I want to talk to tonight a little bit about how I'm so proud to be part of Santa Rosa City Schools, and that Santa Rosa City Schools is a very robust entity in public education, and that we all, all of us stand for public education, and that it is the bedrock of our democracy. We have our doors open to every single student. And that's just the beginning, because after they get to us with their focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion, we make sure that we are teaching, even though we teach in systems, that we are teaching each kid one at a time, that we find their unique needs, their capabilities to uplift each of them. And I see that when we are talking to staff and when we see staff, that they all recognize each child and that those relationships are key. So I really want to make sure that we uplift public education, we uphold public education, we value public education, and that without it, we don't have that kind of equity that we really need as a community, as a state, as a nation. So thank you for all, everybody who has a stake in public education, and that is everybody. No matter where you send your child, whether you have children or not, whether you had children or not, everybody has a stake in public education. So thank you to everybody who's participating tonight. We appreciate it. So we're moving on to a report of actions taken in closed session that we are upholding this Assistant Superintendent Shepherd's recommendation for anticipated litigation. This was item B four in our closed session, and that also we have upheld the existing litigation, the recommendation of the Assistant Superintendent Shepherd, case O A H two thousand and twenty-one zero eight zero four six three. Those were by unanimous by the Board of Education. We're moving on to C five. Are there any statements of extension, board members? Seeing none. Board members, do we have any adjustments to the agenda for this evening? Seeing none. Beth, would you please?
I'm sorry, for President Fong, I do have an adjustment to the agenda on F five. The contract for SHADCO design and construction was not included in the attachments that we provided, so we'd like to pull that item for discussion so that you can vote on the ones that we did provide and exclude the SHADCO at this time.
And discuss that one later or in another take.
Yes, we'll bring it back.
Just a clarification. Did we report out B?
You broke, what did you say, Director Medina?
I said, did we report out B five?
Thank you. No, we didn't. Rewind back to B five. The board considered in closed session student expulsion cases, and this, I will read them separately. So two thousand and twenty-one slash twenty-two oh two. The recommendation by a district was approved. Two thousand and twenty-one slash twenty-two oh four. This was approved as well. And two thousand and twenty-one slash twenty-two oh six was approved during closed session. Thank you, Omar. Beth Burke, would you please poll the public to see if they have anything to ask about the consent items to say?
Sure. So if there are members of the public who would like to comment on any of the items in the F section of the agenda, these are toward the end of the meeting, the consent items. Those items need to be pulled for discussion, but we will not have discussion until we get to the F items. So if there's anyone who would like to comment on an item in the F section, please raise your hand at this time, and you can tell us which item that is. And I see Sheila Walker's hand is raised. Sheila, would you please tell us which item?
F nine and F ten.
Thank you. Jonathan Kuminga.
F ten.
Thank you. And Deanna Oliveris, I am guessing. It just says Deanna.
F nine and F ten.
And are you Deanna Oliveris?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. And Zoom user, could you please state your name for the record and tell us which item?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Galusha, and I would like F nine and F ten.
Thank you. Josh Yarnall.
Yes, I would like to comment on F nine and ten as well.
Thank you. All right, it looks like those are all of our hands raised. President Fong.
Thank you, people. Thank you for being here early to do that and then hanging on to the end to talk about it. We are now on C seven. It's time to take public comment on non-agenda items. And Beth, thank you again.
All right, so this is the time in the meeting where we ask our students to comment first. So I'm going to lower all hands. And this is public comment on non-agenda items. If there are any students who would like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda, please raise your hands at this time. So for example, if you wanted to comment on COVID nineteen, you would not do it at this time because we do have that on the agenda. This is things that are not on the agenda. Students first. Okay, now we will open it to anyone. If there's anyone who would like to comment on a non-agenda item, please raise your hand at this time. And our first comment is Dr. Janine Wilson. Dr. Wilson, are you there? All right, we're going to move on. Please raise your hand again, Dr. Wilson. If you did want to comment. So our first comment is Sherry Cabral.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Good evening, President Fong, board members and staff. I'm Sherry Cabral, the Secretary Treasurer of the North Bay Building and Construction Trades Council. On September twenty-third, the Engineering News Record published a study conducted by the Illinois Economic Policy Institute based on federally available data showing that the rate of pay and healthcare benefits realized by joint apprenticeship graduates is commensurate with and even exceeds that of individuals with bachelor's degrees. There is, however, one significant differences. Apprentices of Joint Labor Management Apprenticeship Programs in the Construction Trades have zero educational debt. In California, Joint Labor Management Apprenticeship Programs train ninety-two percent of the apprentices statewide. Over two-thirds of our apprentices are people of color, and we train ninety-seven percent of all women who enter into the trades. Due to our structure, there's no gender gap in pay, benefits, or opportunity. We are gender blind, ethnicity blind, and all welcoming. These are not jobs, they're careers, but they're careers with a wage to sustain a family that offer healthcare to the member and their dependents and a retirement package from apprenticeship through their retirement. Add to this the benefit that in Sonoma County, our apprenticeship programs are partnered with SRJC, which means that many apprentices are earning.
Sherry, I'm going to stop you for a second.
Yep.
This is public comment on non-agenda items.
This has nothing to do with anything later, I promise.
Okay, thank you.
While attending the apprenticeship program, so they're dual enrolled, and many leave the apprenticeship program only a few courses shy of an AA. With all of these benefits, one might ask why these programs are not well-known. Quite simply, we don't showcase them enough. So what I wanted to speak to tonight is to invite the board, the staff, and interested parents and students to attend a job fair that's being held on October twenty-third from ten a.m. to two p.m. at the Teamsters Hall at thirteen seventy-one Neotomus Avenue in Santa Rosa to explore the opportunities for apprenticeship in the construction trades. It's an outdoor event. All COVID protocols will be followed, and we hope to see you all there.
Thank you. And President Fong, just to confirm, are we having two minutes for public comment?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So everyone, we will have a clock that you can watch to keep track of your time. Next is Carmen Molina, and this is non-agenda items.
Good evening, everyone. I'm speaking tonight to address the snacks that are being provided for our children. Each day, the kids are being offered a snack that has at least twenty-three grams of sugar. Children are not supposed to consume more than twenty-five grams of sugar per day, and we are feeding them this amount in one sitting. This is not okay. We have a menu that is published, and yet many of these foods are not being provided due to supply and demand issues. My issue is that we need to do better and accept better for our children. I'm so happy that we are back in person and hunger is being addressed. However, I do not accept that feeding our kids empty calories and filling them with sugar is solving anything. The idea that at least we have food for them is unacceptable. That our kids that are hungry will go hungry if we don't feed them? This is baloney. I am one of those kids that depends or depended on the meals that school provided. I ate the healthy food due to hunger, not preference. We need to look closer at this issue, and I demand better for our children. Please help guide us, parents, and let us know who is providing this food and who we can contact to have our voices heard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next public comment on an item that is not on the agenda is Deanna Oliveris.
Hello. My comment is, I'm curious if, I know you can't answer me, but if the board, the school board, has any policy on social media and teachers encouraging students to follow them on social media and as well as communicate privately through the messaging systems on social media, which I'm assuming the school doesn't have access to. It's upsetting to me. Many, many junior high and high school teachers are doing this. They're grown adults having private conversations with children, minors, is a huge liability. I've talked to my school principal, vice principal. I've talked to HR, Santa Rosa School District HR. I've sent messages to Anna. And I'm not going to stop until this is figured out. The, they're using it as a communication method for homework that is encouraging children to be on apps like TikTok, but then be reprimanded for these TikTok challenges that are going around. Teachers have very disgusting followers, and if students comment on these one teacher in particular, then she says, oh, we're at Santa Rosa, we're at Rington Valley School District. Where are my Santa Rosa School District, Rington Valley Middle School on October twelfth, say, I'm in front of the campus. So if my child's following her, or any child, my child isn't, but I'm sticking up for other children, they know where our children go to school. She posts a bell schedule. Somebody knows where my children goes to school and their bell schedule. And for an adult in a school district, in a principal, vice principal, Ryan Thompson, to be okay with that? Encouraging students to use their pronouns, encouraging weird behavior that I'm not okay with, political, is not okay. Parents need to check their children's teachers' social media.
Thank you. Next is Karen Wagner.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm Karen Wagner, and I'm a Special Ed Assistant for the Santa Rosa City Schools, and I just want to put out a plug for the need for special ed assistance out there. It's been a huge rewarding career for me, gives me meaning and purpose. It's become part of my mission. Initially, when I first started doing it, you know, what, twenty-four years ago? That really wasn't the case, but it's definitely been a rewarding career. And if there's any parents out there that, you know, you want to have the same schedule as your students. If you want to get off the crazy mom train, and you still want to be able to be home with your kids in the afternoon, you know, and get dinner going, sports going, with all that, I mean, that's what this position lends to. That, you know, you don't have to be on the crazy train, and it's a nice calming position, but that's rewarding. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kirsten McConaughey. Kirsten, are you there?
Yes, thank you very much. I think it was a mishap. I'm sorry about that.
Kirsten, we can hear you now.
I just would like to speak about the Santa Rosa School District's project labor agreement. Thank you very much.
That will be coming up later in the meeting, Kirsten.
Thank you. That's why I said it was a mishap. Pardon me.
Got it. Thank you. Next is Shelby Pryor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. As I was combing through some of your guys' archives for things, I come across something that happened on June tenth of two thousand and twenty. It's just a letter that addresses our community, and it talks about your stance with Black Lives Matter, and basically how you are in symbolic understanding of the black community and and the things and the atrocities that are going on currently to address some of the things with current policies and things that you guys will be voting on here in the near future. I suggest you go back and look at what you guys signed your names to. Ed Sheffield, Laura Fong, Omar, Dr. Diane, Jill McCormick, Jim Klaus, Ms. Dela Cruz, and many others who sign that they believe that imposing equity and the ability to give access to everyone under the conditions that you guys are public servants and standing to engage and report and reform and review all these different matters that go along with people and their individuality. I would hope that you guys would take the time to go back and read that that piece of information you signed, because there's a lot of things that are going on that are excluding people of my nationality. And I'm, I'm very concerned at the fact that our voices aren't being heard and being put in the hands of individuals who do not look like me and do not hold the same value that I have. That's all.
Thank you. Next, a public comment on a non-agenda item is Sheila Walker.
Hi, President Fong, members of the board and Superintendent Trinell. I would just like to encourage the district to be really creative on how to fill the various staff vacancies that we have in our schools. I know that we have vacancies that are being felt across all job sectors, but I just want to offer, as a parent who comes on here with often with other information or a different idea of how this board might vote or view an issue, I just want to offer my help and ask how we parents can help with this, possibly even with the staff that's there. We need to get these vacancies filled. Our schools aren't safe with short staff. We're seeing a lot more bullying. We have a lot more behavior issues. And I would really like to see the district come up with an anti-bullying, social emotional behavior program that could be brought in for all the schools, because it's really important. This is happening to my son, who's a student in middle school. He's an eighth grader, and I really would hope that we could work together to find a way to let people know about the opportunities and fill these positions. Thank you.
Thank you. And President Fong, there are no more hands raised.
We appreciate every single person who took the time to weigh in and give us your thoughts. And of course, you can also email us. We read all your emails. So if you can't speak, or you don't want to speak, or you can't you don't have the time, just, we read emails. We are moving now to reports, the D section of our agenda, and it is time for a C S E A, Santa Rosa Chapter Seventy-Five report.
If there is a representative for C S E A, could you please raise your hand? President Fong, it looks like there will be no report for C S E A this evening.
Thank you so much. And do we have Santa Rosa Teachers Association report tonight?
Yes, I will be moving over Ms. Howell.
So I'm going to say, welcome to President Catherine Howell.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. President Fong and Superintendent Trinell and members of the board, just a couple of comments about some of the discussions that you're going to be having this evening. First, sorry about the glare. So E four, thank you for the COVID updates. We're happy to see the numbers as high as they are for vaccinated staff. Just wanted to let you know that SRTA would be happy to help to contact those last few members that haven't responded to the district about their vaccination status. So, but that's good news. So we're all moving in the right direction with that. E five, the S R three plan. SRTA is a little concerned that the spending of twenty-two million dollars and the only input that seems to be organized for people is a Google form, which is not an inclusive decision-making practice. And if we are actually fighting for equity and inclusion for all of our families, we need to come up with better ways to involve them in these processes that aren't just simply an electronic Google form to fill out and call it good. So we're looking for more inclusion and more creative ways to invite our stakeholders to comment on that twenty-two million dollar expenditure that's coming up. In terms of E six, SRTA fully supports the project stabilization agreement. Just as we are supporting our students, we need to support their families, and we need to ensure that the bond monies that we're spending are going to be spent on jobs that contribute to a living wage, that give workers benefits, that guarantee skilled workers, safe working conditions, and also can increase opportunities in the long run for our graduated students who are looking to enter into the construction and building trades. So that we're building sustainable job markets through supporting the unions and the trades in our building processes. So SRTA very much supports the project stabilization agreement and hopes that you have a very lively discussion on that item. And finally, as we look at some of the contracts that are being brought forward this evening, knowing that we have such an extreme lack of substitutes in our district, an extreme lack of just staff in general, overextended teachers, and we're wondering who, who and how do we attend these pullout days of of release time to meet with trainers? Dr. Acosta is an example of an amazing presentation that everyone should get to see that people can't go to, can't attend, because there's no substitute for them in their classroom. And also combining that with, you know, let's have some consistency. We're trying to connect with the kids. We're trying to put their social emotional needs first, and pulling teachers out of their classes to go to trainings. Could we just postpone these things, put a little bit of some, cancel some of the ones that are not absolutely necessary at this point in time? Take a little stress off the teachers, give them the opportunity to stay in their classrooms and not be worried about having to figure out how to find a substitute, how to organize for a training, especially coming off the year we came off of with hours and hours and hours of professional development for every single one of our educators in the district. It seems like this is the time to just take a step back and say, you know what, maybe we don't need that contract right now. Maybe we don't need that training for our teachers. Let's leave them in place. Let's let them stay with the kids, and let's let them just, you know, learn in the classroom. So thank you for listening. Thank you for considering these things throughout your discussion this evening, and have a great meeting.
Thank you, President Howell. Superintendent Trinell, your report.
Good evening, everyone. So happy to be with everyone tonight.
Good evening, everyone. So happy to be with everyone tonight and thank you for everyone who's commented this evening. Today is day 44 of school. We are on our way and I have a few things to share today. First, I want to share lessons from fourth grade. So I had an opportunity this week to be in a fourth grade class where the class was very excited to highlight what they're learning in fourth grade history. And if you don't know, in the history social science framework in fourth grade, the focus is on California and a changing state. So the principal and I were quizzed by the fourth graders. And I am sad to report that we would have not passed the test. So two things that I want everyone to know and learn tonight is that our state fish is the golden trout. And that our state fabric is jeans. So two things we've all now learned tonight, which brought such excitement to the students to know that their principal and superintendent didn't know as much as they did, but certainly we were very appreciative to learn from our young scholars. That said, there are certainly a lot that we have been lifting since the start of the school year and definitely more than we have dealt with in previous years. And the fact that we're continuing to deal with COVID is certainly something that we all realize and hope that will eventually dissipate. Along with that, it's very easy to get caught up in the things that aren't going well. And what I would like to do and what I've been sharing with various groups is that we have a lot of good happening in our schools, in our departments, amongst our teams. And so for short of, you know, having something that's too gimmicky, we are going to be pushing forward on a gratitude attitude, SRCS gratitude attitude campaign. We're going to be sharing some of the details very soon with our sites. I've received some ideas that I love, including how our schools might be in competition with each other around how we do this work because there is so much good going on. Just a few things that I want to mention, I had the pleasure of attending, while briefly, the Art Quest Showcase recently. And to see our families and community supporting our students and all of their talent was amazing. Being at the Montgomery Piner football game a few Fridays ago or a couple of Fridays ago, great energy. It was great to see families and students engaging and of course, our athletes doing what they do. And and just this week, we got to witness myself and the principal, a young lady who lost her tooth in class. Right there in the middle of class and the excitement amongst the young students about what that means, right? And and so there's so much great going on, even if it's the little things that we want to capture. So we'll be rolling out some additional details and our families and community, please be on the lookout for some of this campaign as well. And lastly, I will end with how we too are very concerned with the amount of vacancies that we have. Certainly, we don't have enough substitutes in our system. And this isn't just a Santa Rosa City Schools issue. This is a county, a state, and a nationwide issue. So we want to provide some incentives for and to attract more substitutes, more guest teachers, as we like to call the folks who join our team. So we're going to be we are going to be offering a job fair specifically for substitute or guest teacher hiring. On October 28th, it's going to be in person at the district office. We will have a flyer with all of the details and time. Right now, we believe that it'll be about 1:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon in person. And some of the incentives that we will be looking to outline in our communication is increasing the sub-pay rates, which we have various levels. And so we're wanting to be certainly competitive, but also show that that our guest teachers are valued members of our team. And we would love to encourage more people to consider to join our team. In addition to that, we're looking at a bonus that we will provide to our guest teachers after committing to so many days of working with us exclusively. So we look forward to rolling that information out and sharing more with you in the coming days. And with that, I will hand it back to you, President Fong.
Gratitude, attitude, or is it attitude gratitude?
Gratitude, attitude.
I like that. We live in gratefulness every day. I'm going to ask my fellow board members for their reports first. Could you just raise your hand virtually so I can see your hand? Let's start with our Vice President Jill McCormick.
Thank you, President Fong. I just have two really quick updates. Last week, I attended one of the three annual North Coast Section Board of Managers meeting. And the minutes haven't been officially published yet and but they will be. So if anyone wants, you know, in-depth details on what was covered in that meeting, just reach out to me and I will get that to you as soon as we have the minutes published. But basically, it was a lot of dealing with stepping out of last year and into this year involving student athletics and making decisions around the changing mandates regarding athletics and participation in athletics and rules that we need to be following, district to district, league to league, regarding COVID-19 protocols and keeping our student athletes and our fans and supporters safe and our coaches safe. So we talked a lot about that and some updates and decisions were made on that. And I'm sure all of our athletic directors and our district administrators are aware of all those changes and are communicating those. They also talked about the budget, which was hard hit because there weren't so many playoffs and seasons were canceled last year. But they definitely have a viable budget and made some adjustments to the budget. So they're in pretty good setup going into this year. This year, things are going really well so far. There've been a few hiccups along the way, just like everybody else. There's not a manual on how to do this and rules keep changing. So but things are improving and more sports are being offered and fall is pretty much full go at this point. So we're looking forward to that. And they were also finalizing some decisions as far as NCS goes, as far as canceling or rescheduling things based on fire or smoke days so that everybody's on the same page with that. So if you want the details of all of that, just reach out to me and I'll let you know. And then my other quick update is that we, our foundation board for the Made in Santa Rosa Foundation, which I represent the district on, and I'm currently the president of the foundation board. We're having our meeting next Tuesday. And at our next board meeting, I'll give you an update on what we discussed, but we are moving forward. We're finalizing our website. And we are about to file officially for our 4013C so that we can start actually moving forward, especially as COVID-19 is improving and protocols are improving. And then we can actually get moving on some donors and fundraisers and things like that. So more to come on that, but we're really excited about that. And former Superintendent Dr. Kitamora is now our new secretary on the foundation board. So we're really fun to be working with her again, too. So that's my update.
Thank you very much. And that is a foundation to benefit all of the Santa Rosa City Schools.
Actually, it's a foundation to benefit our middle schools and our elementary schools as the primary focus.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that correction. Yes. I see trustee Medina's hand up. Did we lose trustee Medina?
Yeah, it looks like we lost him.
I think we did. Are you here? Okay. Somebody tell me if he gets back on and I'm going to go ahead and give a report. Is there any other board member? I don't see anybody else's hand up. I think we lost Omar. His computer crashed. Okay. So I'm I'm going to give a report. And actually, this is report is really to our staff. And it's to my colleagues on the board and the public. You get to listen in. And it's because it is really hard doing school right now. We are still in a crisis, another phase of the crisis. We've been in crisis. And people, very early on, it's only the first quarter, first trimester that people are feeling very tired, very burnt out and just just rough. So this is really to our staff. Because I'm retired, it's given me the privilege to get to visit schools. So I've been visiting schools, many of them, and I plan to visit all of the schools. And I thank the principals for being generous with their time and for teachers for being generous to allow me into the classrooms and once in a while get to speak to the kids. So we're talking about a year and a half, a year and a quarter of COVID and another quarter of hybrid has left its mark, infallible mark on our students. And while we despair of what was lost to all of us, however we call it, we are equally grateful. And we note that there's that gratitude attitude. And we know that the teachers, the staff, and the students are really back together and there is joy in those classrooms. It looks kind of normal, except they have masks on. There's a lot of joy about learning and kindergarten academy to 12th grade that we're back together and everybody is doing very heartfelt work, no matter where that child is in her development, his development. It is full of heart. The challenges abound, but the strength and the commitment of our staff to to dive in and to be with each child for what that child needs is just heartfelt, makes me emotional. Thank you to all the staff at every single level where you reach kids, whether you're handing out those sun chips at school, at lunch lines, or you're helping someone learn how to make their letters or their sounds or analyze the jungle or whatever it is, the book, the nuggle. Thank you, because you are putting heart and soul. And it is really, and this is for everybody, our stakeholders, it is incumbent upon each of us, each of you to keep weighing in, to keep telling us how things are going for you. The board makes its decision on our best information. We listen, we watch, we investigate, we engage in dialogue. We have to make our best decisions, given all the information that you can possibly get to us. But there's also cost to each decision and not everybody agrees with the decision. But believe me, we agonize over our decisions. I am so energized for this work and going to see those kids and this in the staff. Staff is energized. And when things become overwhelming for folks, other people pick up the slack and pick up the pace and then people just take turns because we do get overwhelmed. People do go into despair. And that's human nature. But that's the thing about being together. So I want to call it a few people, child nutrition. Somebody said something about child nutrition today. I got to see Piner speed lines. They got, everybody is getting free lunch because this was an amazing thing, way more people going through the speed lines, right? 900 kids going through four speed lines, 12 minutes, everyone got fed. They had hamburgers and pupusas that day, raisins, bananas, apples, sun chips, juice, and milk is what I saw. I know that we have had supply line issues. I've seen like sugar cereal and some of the elementary school campuses. But the supply lines are bad in the country. So we learned about that. Our nurses, amazing jobs, our school psychs, our attendance people who are frontline checking on absences and making sure who's sick, who's not sick and who needs a little COVID, excuse me, who needs some testing. Our custodians who are ever vigilant, cleaning, 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 even stricter cleaning schedules. People who man the isolation tents, the yard duty, the campus supervisors, when we're not enough and we have absences and positions aren't filled. Counselors who are carefully monitoring our students who gave up during distance learning and now just trying to catch up like crazy, a whole year of catching up, tough, it's tough. Our administrators who are subbing, we see you, you know that. Our teachers who are subbing during their prep period, that's a tough thing, teaching all day and then subbing during your prep when you don't get a break. Very tough. It takes a lot of vitality to do that. To the teachers who do not see a viable way through the challenges of A to G, when there's so many challenges and you're doing it anyway, you're continuing anyway, we see you, the board sees you. I want you to know the board sees you. We understand, we support you. We are continuing to try to do policy. I know our superintendent is working very hard on it and her cabinet and her directors. The bedrock is really the people in our system giving that commitment, giving their all. So where we need to, where we need to look, folks, our systems. What systems need to change? What archaic systems are keeping us in the lanes that no longer serve the very needs that we have? And you've heard me talk about this so many times before. And I urge you, I beg you, I give you permission, whatever, to keep talking about all those different ways they can do things that are systems because we are, we are structured with our systems. So what are the changeable parts? For example, the junior English teachers, Santa Rosa High School, Piner High School, and I'm, there might be more, sorry, who are saying that junior English is going to be junior English ethnic studies now and next year and forever. They're incorporating all of that. It's amazing. The use of new software that we have, the people are piloting for assessment and math help. That you're doing that, they're trying to find, they're trying to diversify ways to get more practice time to kids. Someone mentioned IXL, not sure the program. There's so much genius in our, in our, in our system with all the human beings that we have in our system. There's so much genius. So let's, let's keep working about what are the structures that are keeping us in straitjackets? And let's keep thinking about that. And to my fellow board members, that's what we have to keep thinking about, to innovate and create. And that's our job in terms of policy. And Anna, that I know that you know that it's your job and I know that you're tackling it head on, continuing to drink that fire hose. And we thank you. And I thank my fellow board members and I thank all our staffs. So that is the gratitude attitude thing tonight from me and report. Do we have Omar back?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I'm here. I have my hand raised. I'm sorry. Thank you. Well, first off, I'm wondering if I'm smarter than a fourth grader. I have to follow up on that. But I, I really wanted to just talk about how serving on this board and the work that we do is really hard and difficult at times. And we have difficult decisions to make and that impact a lot of people's lives. But to me, I'm very grateful to be a part of such a diverse board and to have an amazing group of you be a part of this. And I'm very grateful for that. That's part of my gratitude. In addition to everybody, thank President Fong. And I'm also thankful for all the students for all the time and effort that they put in, especially in the situation that we've been in these past couple of years for fires to COVID and parents for being supportive and for getting involved and for always being a part of engaging with us and sharing their opinion. Speaker earlier reminded me of some of the great work we've done, our statement on Black Lives Matters. You brought up ethnic studies. I think we've done some incredible work. I was glad to hear that the governor said AB101 last Friday, that's going to make ethnic studies requirement for all students in California. So I'm very grateful that I'm a part of such an amazing board in such a difficult time, doing such difficult work. But with all of you all and all of our staff, it allows me to feel good. So grateful to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Medina. Okay, no other board members got their hands up, I think. Speak up if I'm missing you. I'm not seeing your hands. I'm going to move on to the CSBA report. I'm just going to say this about CSBA. For your edification, California School Board Association, what is it? That is the association that helps school board members do their jobs. They train us, they have workshops, they're they lobby for full and fair funding for schools. They're, they're big lobbyists for schools. They do good work in terms of what is good for kids and staff, schools, everything. They do good work in terms of what is good for kids and um staff, schools, everything. So we thank them. Um. Period, end of story. Okay. We're moving on. The items, one, action. Public board meeting via teleconferencing per AB three sixty-three. Am I reading that right? Can't see.
Three sixty-one.
Three sixty-one. Superintendent Chanel.
Thank you, Board President Fong, members of the board. Um, staff and our community. Uh, tonight we bring to you information and potential action on the board's part. To consider the continuance of our public meetings in a virtual platform. On Thursday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, our governor Gavin Newsom. Signed Assembly Bill three six one into law, which gives uh local agencies. Including LEAs or um local educational agencies governing boards. The flexibility to continue to conduct public meetings virtually. Um, some things to consider is that AB three six one authorizes until January first. Twenty twenty-four, an LEA to use teleconferencing or a virtual platform. For public meetings without complying with certain Brown Act requirements. And any of the following circumstances. The legislative body holds a meeting during a proclaimed state of emergency. And state or local officials have imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing. The Sonoma County uh Health Department has declared this. And therefore, um, notwithstanding AB three sixty-one. Also specifies that if a local agency determines uh that it would like to continue in a virtual platform. Um, that we would continue doing the notices that we've actually been doing already. Uh, and allowing for public comment um to be accessed. Um, and not putting a hold on those comments once a board meeting begins. And ultimately, um, that this would have to be something that happens every thirty days. By the board in order to continue virtual meetings. Um, Board President Fong, tonight, the board is asked to discuss and consider. Whether the board meetings, the public board meetings would continue virtually. And with that, I hand it back to you, Board President Fong.
What questions do we have, board members? Um, Director De La Cruz.
Thank you. Um. I, I think the question that I have is really around whether or how we've been tracking. Participation virtually versus participation in person. Um, I'd be, I'd be really curious to know. Um. I feel like most school districts across the country have actually. Experienced increased participation in a virtual platform. Um. As well as, um. You know, I, I know it can be very difficult to listen to an entire conversation that's being translated. But it also, that, that. Consistency in translation, um, that happens during Zoom, um, I'm also curious about the impact there. So I wonder if we've had, we have any data. Um, and if we're tracking demographics of the people who are attendant, attending our virtual meetings versus in-person meetings. And then my, my last question is whether or not we have surveyed. Our community and asked them this question.
Do we want to answer that, Superintendent?
Thank you, uh, Director De La Cruz. And we certainly have data that we can pull together. Uh, on past meetings, even pre covid. Um, understanding and understandable. That it, uh, I believe based on my experience in the district and observing our meetings virtually. We have had the uh fortune of having more participants virtually than we would in person. Um, one, previously, there would have been a threshold of the number of seats that were in the space where we met. Uh, and currently, um, if we were to return to that space. Uh, right now, and and that would be City Hall for those who are not aware. Uh, there are social distancing stipul- stipulations that we would have to follow if we were to go back to that venue. Uh, with only the allowance of seventeen attendees to be in person in the space. Um, so if people were to want to come and there were more than that who were wanting to make public comment, people would wait outside and get in line to do that. We certainly could look at other spaces that are in our schools. Um, however, there is encouragement that if we do that, we would still offer a virtual option, so a hybrid. Um, and in that there are, it's not impossible, but certainly there are technicalities that could hinder some of the access um based on that. So we can certainly look into the data collection piece. Um, certainly, and I've forgotten your second question. Oh, did we uh poll the community? We have not done an official poll. Um, this item tonight is the first time that we are able to bring this forward publicly. As a discussion, and so we will be entertaining public comment um on this item.
I'm going to call on uh Clerk Everett Flores.
Um, I, I think you answered my questions. I mean, uh, my question was, what would it look like? I mean, if we, if we were to go back to um to in-person meetings? And have you looked at other spaces? So I, I think you just answered that. Um, thank you, President Flores. I mean, President Fong.
Back at you. And uh trustee Sheffield.
Yeah, I am just wondering if there's any way that we can quickly survey. The school community and try to get a sense of what their preference might be. It's true, we've seen a lot more participation. Um, yeah, it makes our jobs harder, but you know, people are in the community are given a voice, they're able to speak up. And participate in a way that they maybe couldn't before, people that are home with families, home with kids. Um, so you know, it, it might be, um, I guess what I'm proposing is that maybe we try to do a little bit of outreach and and get a sense of. Um, of those people, those hundred and seven people who are participating right now. Um, and um, and you know, more that we've seen um in previous meetings to sort of get a sense of of. Um, of of, you know, get their take on this, just a thought.
Okay, I see no other comment questions. So right now I'm going to open this up to public comment.
So if there are members of the public who are students, um. Please raise your hands at this time if you'd like to comment on item E one. Any students would like to comment on E one? And now we'll open it to any member of the public who would like to comment on item E one, please raise your hand. And it looks like Liz Birch would like to comment.
Hi, uh, thank you. Um, yes, I had a question. Um. So what parts of the Brown Act requirements are the board currently not complying with? In other words, they don't need to comply with these things during. These sorts of emergency meetings. So what does that mean? I'd like to have an answer to that question somehow. And um along those lines, uh, looking at the closed part of the meetings, I'm curious. How the public can find out at least what lawsuits are or what um litigation is before the board? If one is interested. And so those are questions. I don't know how to get those answers, but. I would uh be most interested in that. And I would just say that I do really think. That there's been incredible participation with these meetings and I hope they continue forever because as a parent, uh, I have to be home right now. Um, so I could actually participate and I, I would love to see it continue, but of course I would definitely want. Um, the Brown Act to be followed and open meetings when we can go back in person too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Deanna Oliveras.
Hi, I think that it should definitely be a hybrid option. Um, because some people can't make it in person. And this is their preferred method. I think that scientifically speaking, it's really hard to say Zoom is the reason why so many parents are showing up. Um, you know, the reason why so many parents are just showing up to meetings now is because, oh, it's, you know, through Zoom. Um, that's all we've had since covid. And I think it's more of a matter of parents being fed up, not a matter of parents. Being convenienced by Zoom. Um, I would like to be in person and if there's only seventeen people that could. Fit in that room, I think all of us passionate parents would wait outside until midnight. And I think that's the best thing to do, parents, so that we can network. And exchange email and phone number and create our own homeschool pods for when we're so fed up, we pull our children. So everyone needs to advocate to have both because. Counties all over California with worse numbers than ours, look them up. Are in-person school board meetings. So I feel like it's very weird that we don't have that option. And I feel it's weird that it's brought as an action item without. Community consent. And I think anything that's brought as an action or consent item without knowledge, without stakeholders input. Is tyranny pretty much because we get to wait for four to six hours on this call. And prepare at dinner and help our kids and bathe our kids and we get to talk for two minutes if we're lucky. And if we don't forget to raise our hand in the proper time and if we forget to remember, you know, remember that we actually had a question. So what we're doing to be able to speak a few minutes. I think you, you guys need to realize how long we listen to you talk.
Thank you. Next is Zoom user. Could you please state your name for the record?
Hello, it's Jennifer Delucia again, and I absolutely adore the idea of having either or. And this day and age, I feel like the safety. Not only with Corona, but with everybody being so passionate. Having the ability to, to be heard and there's no actual physical. Incident, unfortunately, that's where we are. So I can agree, we need to continue having as many parents participate because it's our kids. And if it's not our kids, who's it going to be? It's our future, so we have to get involved. I appreciate all you guys do and I know. You guys are just there and most of the time you're just the messenger and we appreciate you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Motorola One. Could you please state your name for the record? Person with the name Motorola One, could you please state your name for the record? Do you still want to comment?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. Would you please state your name, sir?
Gerald Stahl, you guys know who I am. Uh, I disagree with the Zoom, to be honest with all you guys. I don't think there's any connect through this Zoom. You guys can't. See the, the. The anger or the feelings that parents have towards you guys or the situations or your guys' policies that you vote for or approve. So I think it, it is. Highly recommended that you guys need to see parents in person. That way you guys can see how this is affecting parents and your guys' decisions. And not just hide behind a screen. Because I don't think you guys really understand. That you guys, your decisions are affecting parents and kids in a negative way. So I would, I would go for in-person. And that's it.
Thank you. And President Fong, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you to everybody who weighed in to give your opinion. Um. Board members, what other comments do you have on this? And I see a hand up. Uh, trustee McCormick's hand up right now. Go ahead. And then trustee Medina's hand up.
I just want to ask a clarifying question that. This action item that we're voting on is basically. We're saying that we are going to be in compliance with the mandate set by uh AB three sixty-one. And we are not making a hard decision tonight on whether we are continuing virtually or in person or a hybrid. This is just an acknowledgement of what the rules are regarding um the situation that we're in. And meeting virtually and how we uh maintain um in compliance with the Brown Act and such. Am I correct on that?
So, um, or President Fong, would you like me to take that?
Yes.
Okay, it is my understanding that in order for us to, even though the county has recommended. Um, that uh LEAs or local agencies. Um, per emergency order, um, that we are allowed to continue to meet virtually. Um, the per AB three sixty-one, the board does need to take action every thirty days. In order to maintain a virtual platform. If you do not take that action tonight, then we will be meeting in person at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. Um, and so I think that we still need this as a viable option for now. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve uh. Item E one, public board meetings via teleconference per AB three sixty-one. So that we have options moving forward and that we are in compliance and following the law.
I'll second that.
All right, and also, uh, Director Medina, you have a comment?
Yeah, so um, just there's some questions if, if we could add just to support the motion. Um. In relation to the space that we use, um. Superintendent, do you know the, the cost, the, the normal cost that we pay for that?
That's a great question. I'd like to lean on Deputy Superintendent Edson.
Uh, Director Medina, could you repeat the question, please? I missed the last part of it.
Oh, the, the, the costs that we pay for using that space of, of the city council space?
Uh, it's, uh, if memory serves, it's been a while. Uh, it's an hourly rate based on six hours. Uh, I want to say it's about a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for the uh city employee costs included as well.
And the other question was, given the existing restrictions. Um. We, we wouldn't be able to use a traditional closed session space. Um, I, I believe so during the closed session. Um, people would probably have to wait outside or something of that nature if they arrive early for the meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I'm also wondering if a hybrid is a viable option. Meaning we are still on Zoom, we are together in person, the board. And people can weigh in. Distance and also they can weigh in in person. Is that a hybrid option, such a thing?
That is correct. That would be the hybrid option. Um, so wherever the board is meeting physically in person. Uh, we would have to provide space for the public to be with you in the same space. Um, and therefore, looking at, you know, what spaces are available to us, whether that's going back to City Hall. Or using a space here in the district. We would have to provide space in the same room where the board is residing for the meeting.
I know that city council has uh space restrictions, very pretty strict space restrictions. Would we have those same space restrictions at our boardroom? Our district, small room.
If we were to host, um, if the board were to meet in the boardroom here at two eleven Ridgeway. Um, then we would have to provide seats in the room for the public. Even if it was minimal, um, and uh then we would provide a, a spillover space. That people would then be able to interact virtually. Um, in that space, uh, we would then offer the opportunity for people to come over to do public comment in person. Uh, with the board with the expectation to go back to the spillover room. Because of the limited space in that boardroom.
We need to renew this every thirty days, is that right, Superintendent?
That is correct.
Okay, so um, that gives us some time to um. Get some public input besides just tonight. Also feedback from more parents who are not watching tonight.
Correct.
I'd like, I think that's an important thing to hear from our stakeholders. Um, Director De La Cruz.
Yeah, I, I would love also, um, if we could survey. Uh, other, other bodies um within the jurisdiction of the county to understand. What um they've done and how it's gone. Um, whether it's hybrid or continued virtual or. Um. You know, in person with strict limitations. So if we could also survey other bodies within the jurisdiction, that would be great.
All right, folks, um, there's a motion on the table, it's been seconded. Moved and seconded. Um, Deanna, may we have that vote, please?
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
President Fong.
Hi. Thank you. We are going to take a minute for inter- Thank you. We are going to take a minute for interpreter switch.
Thank you.
We're all set. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're moving on to E2. This is Action Approval of Resolution Recognizing October 2021 as Filipino American History Month. And Superintendent Anna Trunell will be presenting that to us tonight.
Yes, thank you again, Board President Fong, members of the board, our staff and community. I'm actually very honored tonight to bring forward this resolution. It has a personal connection for me as one of my grandmothers was half Filipino. And I posthumously would like to honor her and everyone that is a part of this community tonight and bring forward to the board Resolution 2021-22-15, Recognizing October 2021 as Filipino American History Month. The Filipino American History Month began in 1992, done in recognition of the contribution, culture, and heritage that Filipino Americans brought to the United States from the Philippines when they arrived in October of 1587. California is home to over half of the Filipino population in the United States and the location of historic Filipino communities such as Los Angeles, San Francisco, Stockton, Vallejo, Delano, San Diego, and Salinas, among others. There are many, many notable individuals in society who are of Filipino descent, who are contributors in our communities, as well as the many community members right here in Santa Rosa and amongst our own staff who are also contributors and should be celebrated. And so with that, I hand it back to you, Board President Fong.
Thank you. There are a lot of names here on this agenda that in many, many areas of people of distinction. Questions from the board? And we have no hands up, so I'm going to open this to public comment right now.
If there are any students who'd like to comment on item E2, please raise your hands. And now if there are any members of the public who would like to comment on item E2, please raise your hand at this time. And Deanna Oliveras would like to comment.
I figured it's me again. I figured I rather figure I comment since I'm going to be here until probably midnight. So what am I commenting on? The Filipino Heritage Month Day? I'm wondering because we're trying to be so inclusive, if we're going to include every culture nationality for a day. Because I think we should. I don't think we should limit it because we're really trying to be inclusive. So I think, you know, we should set a goal, it should be an agenda item, it should be a consent item next time, and we should make a list of all the days and just pass them in one big swoop. Because I think we all deserve recognition, no matter what nationality you are. No matter where your ancestors are from, if you work hard, you deserve recognition. And I think it's important for us to tell our children that and tell our children all stories. Because, you know, we're sitting in front of a Zoom screen, you don't know what nationality I am. I'm multiple nationalities. And like Shelby Prior said earlier, I don't feel like I'm represented. And I quite honestly feel discriminated against by this board. So, thank you.
Thank you. And next is Motorola One, which I am guessing is Mr. Gerald Stahl.
Yes, it is. I agree with Deanna, to be honest with you guys. You know what's going on lately, and I'm sure you guys are all aware of it. You got the the whole anti-white American thing going on. And, you know, being a white male myself, how do you how do you guys think that affects me or my kids? You know, we feel we feel disconnected from you. All races are recognized, appreciated, celebrated. But when it comes to the white American male, you know, to be honest with you guys, we're kind of shitted on and we're looked at like we're low people. So, you know, you guys got to take that into account because there's a lot of white people here that feel that way. So that's what my input is.
Thank you. Next is Sheri Marini.
Hi, I'm actually, hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, perfect. I actually am here tonight representing ABC Norcal, which is not speaking in regards to the we're on the indigenous people section. Is that correct?
We're actually talking about Filipino Heritage Month. Sheri, is that what you'd like to comment on?
Um, I'm actually with the other section, a little bit farther down.
Okay.
I'm attending with Nicole Garing.
We will call on you later when we get to that item. Thank you.
Section six.
And next for a comment on item E2, the Resolution Recognizing Filipino American History Month, is John McEntaggart. John, are you there? We cannot hear you. Unfortunately, Mr. McEntaggart, we cannot hear you. President Fong, it looks like there are no other there are no other hands raised.
Are there any other, okay, so we I see a comment from Vice President McCormick.
I was just going to make the motion that we approve the Resolution Recognizing October 2021 as Filipino American History Month.
All right, so that was moved by Jill McCormick, and I think there was a tie, so I'm going to go with Director Sheffield. And we can vote on that.
I just wanted to comment.
Director Medina has his hand up.
Oh. Yes, you do. Thank you.
Yeah, just on the issue, I just wanted to acknowledge that yesterday Mary Young was accepted into the California Hall of Fame. It was a Filipino American, so I just wanted to add that because it seemed relevant.
Thank you. We can have that vote now.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
President Fong.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Trunell. We are moving on to E3, an action item. This is a resolution proclaiming October 11th, 2021 as Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we are going to have that presented to us by Clerk Trustee Everett Flores tonight.
Right, thank you, President Fong, and thank you to the Senator, City School Board for bringing this particular resolution. It is my honor to present this resolution proclaiming October 11th, 2021 as Indigenous Peoples' Day. It is estimated that there are more than 370 million indigenous people spread across 70 countries worldwide, practicing unique traditions that retain social, cultural, economic, and political characteristics that are distinct from those of the dominant societies in which they live. Spread across the world from the Arctic to the South Pacific, they are the descendants, according to a common definition, of those who inhabited a country or geographical region at the time when people of different cultures or ethnic origins arrived. The new arrivals later became dominant through conquest, occupation, settlement, or other means. Indigenous Peoples' Day recognizes that native people are the first inhabitants of the Americas, including the lands that later became the United States of America. This resolution is an honor and supports all indigenous people. And with that, President Fong, I hand it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Questions, board? Director Medina?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask clarify. I think I know why it was changed to October 11th versus October 12th, which was the date that it originally started, the president, when I wrote in 2019. I know the October 11th is how the federal government recognizes it, but it's based on the October 12th date. So later I planned on proposing that we change it to October 12th as that's based on the landing of Columbus of the Americas, which is traditionally what that day Indigenous Peoples' Day is recognizing.
Clerk Flores?
Yes, a suggestion to our superintendent, if we can bring this item in September for next year instead of October. So we're ahead of the curve. Thank you.
I'm going to open this to public comment at this point.
Are there any students who would like to comment on item E3, the Resolution Proclaiming?
Moderator. Can you hear me? Open this item to public comment.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. If there are any students who would like to comment on item E3, please raise your hands at this time. And now opening it up to any members of the public. Any members of the public who'd like to comment on item E3, please raise your hands at this time. Indiana Oliveras has her hand up.
Again, just as I said for the Filipino Heritage Month, and I don't have to say this, but I guess because everybody looks at race, I have to say this, just as Anna did. My children are Native American. They're enrolled tribal members. They have BIA numbers. But I shouldn't have to say that because it shouldn't matter, because we should be inclusive enough to include everybody. But we are not. And especially when the last comment I made, it's very condescending, the way everyone smirks and the way Omar says, oh, just to let you know, Filipino whoever, whoever is Hall of Fame, and everyone smirks and we can't, we can't see the chat and we can't see what's behind your videos. It's very condescending. And you are all condescending to the public a lot. And I video record this. And as leaders, Lori Fong and Anna Terrell, you, if you're leaders, it's up to you to stop it. Because I think it's very disrespectful. And again, here you are, the six or seven of you voting on something that have have we waited? I have three kids in the school district. Have I waited? Have you asked everybody? But because people ignorantly voted for some of you, you're able to make these rules. There should be a precedent. You should ask for stakeholders feedback before it even makes it to this part. I'm done.
Next comment is Shelby Prior.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
As a biracial American in America, watching how individuals want to claim inclusion, we've been spending a lot of our time trying to figure out how to segregate ourselves. Malcolm X says something that made a lot of sense. We should be chasing what the Lord has to say versus what men have to say. No one sitting on this board currently has the jurisdiction to tell me where I'm from. I'm half-black and half-white. I grew up in Vallejo, California. So technically, I'm a Vallejo Californian, and that's where my 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 understanding of life comes from. The diversity in my community is much greater than the diversity in your community that I'm currently living in. I find it very shameful that we spent a majority of our time trying to argue over what part of the dirt we've claimed and and what type of people we're going to become based off of, you know, our heritage and and these things that we're pride felt about. But they say one great thing, pride comes before a fall. I'm watching the American society get torn apart based on something that I've been dealing with my whole entire life. You're setting our children up and every future person up for failure by doing so. You can be proud of where you're from, but it doesn't change the content of your character. If your character is minimal, it doesn't even matter where you're from. So while you guys are, you know, creating these these obstacles and these hurdles for these young people to deal with, I'm a I'm a result of someone who's had to deal with these things that have been going on. Freedom is for everyone, not just because of where you're from or what you your ancestors have accomplished. My end.
Thank you, Mr. Parba. Time is up. Our next comment on item E3, which is the Resolution About Indigenous Peoples' Day, is Gerald Stahl.
Yeah, I disagree with you guys on it. I mean, you know, I can see respecting everybody and having a day for everybody. But in the reality, you guys are trying to stomp out Columbus Day for this day. I mean, pick a different day and just roll with it. You guys, you all were taught about Columbus, this, you know. What are you guys really trying to do here? I mean, what what is it? It's pointless to do. All it does is cause issues with other races and different people. I grew up, you know, Columbus was taught to me. Columbus was taught to every single one of you people sitting on the board. Every single one of you. And you guys still can sit here and even entertain the thought of trying to stomp out that day just to give somebody else? What? What are you giving somebody else more recognition? Then why can't you give a different race more recognition? It doesn't make any sense. And as far as Flores's comments, let's face it, history's been, it evolves every day. There's new stuff that comes out. There's new discoveries that come out. So who's to say that anybody was here first? Was Flores alive back then? No one here on planet Earth was alive back then to tell me that they seen this with their own two eyes, that this is true. So to stomp out a Columbus Day for indigenous people, it makes no sense. It's offensive to me in a negative way because I am white and Columbus is, to me, something that I celebrate. And I'm sure it has in your past been something to you that you've celebrated too. So you guys probably should think of a little bit more before we go and pass a resolution. That's it.
Next comment is Gerardo Magana Lopez.
Yeah, hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right on, yeah, well, Christopher Columbus actually found the United States by accident. When he showed up, he called the Native Americans Indians because he thought he was in India. So he was actually a poor navigator. He also raped and pillaged and murdered, so I don't think we should celebrate him anymore. So I am in agreement with you guys, and I think the Native American people should have their day or month or whatever you guys prepare to give them. And these are facts. These are not opinions. This happened. It is known. And it might not have been taught around when the guy before me speaking was in school, but we know this now. So I mean, this country has a history of celebrating people who were slave owners and rapists. And, you know, they're on they're on bills, they're on currency, and they have their own mountains with their faces on it. To say that you're a Caucasian male and you don't feel represented in the United States, it's just, it's ignorant. So I am agree with you guys, and I think the indigenous people should have their day or month, whatever you prepare to give them. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. And President Fong, there are no other hands raised.
I'd like to make a
Pardon?
I'd like to move to approve the resolution proclaiming October. Are we going with the 12th, 2021 as Indigenous Peoples' Day?
Second.
All right, the motion is a resolution proclaiming October 12th, 2021 as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And seconded by, that was motion by Director De La Cruz and seconded by Director Flores. So let's have that vote, please.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Very resound and very proud. Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. Excuse me, aye. All right, that passes. Thank you so much. We are moving on to E4. It's discussion on the COVID-19 updates and this goes to Superintendent Truenell.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing over Mr. Mazzara, Board, Members of the Board, President Fong, Staff and Community. We bring forward to you tonight some updates that have occurred in recent days and weeks that gives additional insight to direction and guidance that we as a district um, need to pay attention to. Uh, and so I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Mazzara to give some of those highlights now.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Truenell, President Fong and Board members. I think, uh, you know, we've had discussion on this a couple of weeks ago, obviously. And so at this point, I'm just going to highlight some of the changes and things that have happened over the last couple of weeks. And I'll end with a little bit on the governor's, uh, announcement that happened. Um, first of all, I just want to, the local county guidance, uh, there's been a contact tracing that has been around exposures with what have been called brief exposures, uh, for students that would be maskless. Let's say in, uh, passing in the hallways or, uh, passing each other just outside in, in brief moments. And so there was clarity around this week that that is not considered cumulative in the amount of the 15 minutes that counts for close contacts. That's just been kind of a clarity that we've got provided this week. Uh, another clarity that came through is now, uh, public health is suggesting that vaccinated students don't need to be a part of our regular, regular surveillance testing. To be clear, the board has not taken action on surveillance testing. And we provided some information about that last time, but just the guidance of, if that becomes a, a topic for consideration in the future, uh, they're suggesting that vaccinated students do not need to be part of regular surveillance testing. And then I wanted to let the board members know that, uh, we are currently under the, the current order under the county. We are testing, uh, unvaccinated staff people. Um, we have a total of about, of about 88. I think that went down to 87 yesterday because someone, uh, was able to turn in their vaccination card. And so that's the county program where they have to provide weekly testing. And so we're doing that testing. We're accommodating employees, uh, by those that want to do it at their school site. We're doing, uh, we're bringing our little testing vials and, and, uh, staff members are self-testing once a week that way. We also have testing at our Lewis facility. Um, and then their, um, staff members also have an opportunity to have it done privately and just let us know or inform us, uh, weekly. So we're kind of tested. We're kind of going through those. Um, and I want to announce, uh, that we'll be sending this out as officially also here is that we've, we've increased the number of days that we're available for at Lewis. So we are doing at this point, uh, four days from 2:30 to five every day for students and families that are non-symptomatic and we're opening that same time up for staff. So basically we're open four days a week now at Lewis from 2:30 to five. Again, we're not ready to do symptomatic, but I've had a very optimistic phone call today with the county and we may be looking at that very soon. So hopefully by our next board meeting, we may be able to announce a partnership where we can do that as well. And then the last thing I just want to draw attention to, you know, we, we published a weekly, our COVID dashboard and the number of cases we have. You know, and generally since about the beginning of September, we've been about 10 to 12 cases. We had a very low, uh, case rate last, um, exposed cases last week. Um, but I expected we'll bounce back up to the 10 to 12 rate. And that overall gives us, uh, numbers that put us in kind of a low transmission rate uh, at our schools and what we're doing. So I just kind of want to make sure boards, you were aware of that. And then the last thing, um, that we can talk about, um, although I, I'm going to bring the caveat that we don't necessarily know a lot right now. Uh, the governor's announcement, um, that he will be requiring, uh, mandating for vaccines for both students and staff at some point. I think at this point, the question is the date to be determined. There's some language around beginning in January and some in July and we don't have anything firmer on it on our end. And we ask at our weekly COVID meetings, but, um, there has been nothing firmer on that. Um, and then, and then under the governor's orders, there is something of course around, uh, religious exemptions and medical exemptions. That is still to be determined. Um, so there's nothing I can really bring any, any, any more solid information on that at this point. We are expecting further information. Uh, we're expecting our legal firms to kind of help us with some guidance through that. And so, uh, more on that as it becomes available. Um, and with that, uh, I turn it back to the superintendent or the board.
Thank you, Mr. Mazzara. The last piece that, um, that I'll add on to what Mr. Mazzara just, um, shared with everyone is that, um, with the, uh, changes and shifts that have occurred in recent, in the recent weeks, we are looking at multiple policies that we currently hold and waiting for some direction, um, from CSBA on what those policy updates are going to be, especially since this is coming as an order. Um, there will be following legislate, legislative language and policy. Um, instead of us creating that on our own, we should be following suit um, as it pertains to what legal is, uh, providing to us. Uh, so we will bring that policy information to you as soon as we are able to get, uh, language um, and advisement on language. And with that, I'll hand it back over to you, President Fong.
I'm going to call on our clerk, uh, Ever Flores. Does this hand up?
Thank you, President Fong. Um, Dr. Truenell, could you explain a little bit about why our, our numbers for our guest teachers or subs? It's pretty high in terms of, well, their, the vaccination rate is pretty low. And in terms of no response, I mean, we have about 34 of them. Can you explain, uh, what happened? Why we have those numbers? And what's our policy regarding, you know, hiring teachers or subs or teacher or guest teachers that, um, do not respond or decline to state?
I will add, I will start and then if Mr. Mazzara has any additional information, please jump in. The first thing that I'll share is that the guest teachers that we have, the numbers that are represented here are those who have selected to work at some point with us and/or, or are, um, choosing to take on assignments um, with us. There are far more substitutes in the county as many of our guest teachers or substitutes also serve other districts, um, in the county. So with that, we do ask, uh, to collect that information from them if they would like to continue working with us. Um, and I believe, um, uh, in new processes going forward, when substitutes begin the road to becoming a guest teacher in the county, the county office, the, the Sonoma County Office of Education is requesting that vaccination information um, going forward. So we're trying to collect from those who are in our system to serve as guest teachers for us. And depending on the information that they've provided to us, their contact information, um, they are choosing whether they want to respond to that or not. And some of our guest teachers are actually, who were previously guest teachers for us, are choosing not to be guest teachers right now, which might attribute to some of that lack of response, um, as well. Uh, Mr. Mazzara, anything else?
No, I'm not, oh, let's go ahead. So, so if the follow-ups, I'm sorry. Um, so what happens if, if a guest teacher or sub declines to state or, you know, it is, it isn't vaccinated, vaccinated, what's our policy in terms of hiring, uh, that guest teacher or substitute?
Mr. Mazzara, do you want to speak to, um, those that we might be testing?
Right. And so I, I am aware that we are testing some that they're like any employee. If they chose not to says they're supposed to be doing our weekly testing and we're tracking those like any employee. So I can't speak to maybe perhaps Assistant Superintendent Shepherd can speak to the numbers of those. I'm aware of they're, they're put on my radar as the, as the coordinator of that. And then I put them through the weekly testing process and make sure they are being tested. So that, that's what I can speak to. I don't know. Assistant Superintendent Shepherd? That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, that's correct. So with that, um, the law currently states that anyone who would be considered a worker within our system would follow the same guidance that we would have for any employee. And so they're either declaring their vaccination status with us. If they declined to state or are simply not sharing that information with us, then they will be subject to testing. In the case of a guest teacher, uh, if they refuse to do that, we are not accepting them, um, into our system.
Thank you.
Would anything preclude us from being more strict with guest teachers? That if they declined to state, we will not hire them or if they're not vaccinated, we would not hire them?
I think we would have to look at the language of the law or President Fong as they are categorized as a worker. And so there are outlines specific for workers. This goes to any construction workers or anyone else that's also doing work on our campuses, not just guest teachers. So that it's a broader category. Also because Sonoma County, um, Office of Education is sort of the first leg in the guest teacher or substitute teacher process. They also have, um, some jurisdiction and how those individuals start. So, um, we certainly do have an ability to take a look at that language and see what we would like to do differently. But I just want to highlight that if we specify it for this group, we may need to look at all of the other groups who also work on our campuses.
You know, that's interesting because certainly construction workers or roof, the HVAC employees are, are not in front of kids all day long and our guest teachers are. I'm very interested in finding that out. I am not in favor of having them in front of our kids, unvaccinated, frankly. Um, okay, this is discussion item and I, uh, I'm going to open it up to public comment at this point.
So I'm going to lower all hands, as is our practice, and ask that any students who would like to comment on item E4, please raise their hands at this time. And now we'll open it to anyone in the public who'd like to comment on item E4. Please raise your hand. This is the COVID-19 updates. And our first comment is Muzain Blake. Muzain, are you there?
Hello?
Hello, hello. Hello, we can hear you. Is this Muzain?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Good evening. If the state of California continues forward with vaccine mandates, I will be homeschooling my two children. If there's a statewide school walkout on Monday, October 18th in protest of vaccine mandate. If you oppose vaccine mandates, keep your child home on Monday, October 18th. Let your school know that you are keeping your child home in protest of that vaccine mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jamie Stagel.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Jamie Stagel and I have a high school student. I want to tell the board that I do not envy any of your spots right now. So thank you for being here. I'm asking the board to stop the COVID vaccine mandate for all students to receive in-person instruction. For all of the naysayers, um, they'll say that we've always had to have vaccines to be able to go to school and those vaccines used enabled viruses. The COVID-19 vaccine uses mRNA technology that has never been used in humans until now. Therefore, they are not comparable. You, uh, board are here to ensure that our students receive quality education and the vaccine requirement will medically discriminate our children and ultimately deprive them of that quality of education. The narrative being pushed is that vaccinating all students will be a safer environment. And we all know that a person that is vaccinated can still contract the virus and spread the virus. The same for an unvaccinated person. If it's really about health and safety, why aren't we considering a person's antibodies, antibodies for the virus? Isn't that the whole point of getting a vaccination? And then why aren't we considering testing options? You as the board may think that you're maybe not qualified or you're ill-informed on making public health decisions and you're probably right. So we'll, and so you'll just follow whatever the health department says. And I want to inform you that Orange County School Board has already announced that they are going to be filing a lawsuit against Newsom for the vaccine mandates. The entire Norwalk LA Miranda School Board voted against the mandates. They're standing up and protecting the parents' rights over their own children's medical decisions. Please stand up. Please protect our medical freedoms. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for being mindful of the two-minute time limit. Our next comment on item E4 is Shelby Pryor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I want to circle back around to my earlier comment on the Black Lives Matter issue. You guys are quoted saying, whether you are a parent, student, staff member or member of the community, participate in our meetings or reserve us, agitate us, challenge us and hold us accountable. Join us to contribute to a greater community of compassion, equity and justice for all. After witnessing your actions as a board over the past year, I can say that you have completely contradicted your statement for supporting BLM.
Shelby, is this about, uh, the issue at hand right here? We're talking about COVID.
Yes, ma'am, it is. And you're interrupting my time. Um, this is the issue here is that you guys are creating an issue for people and segregating them based on medical information that you have no clue whatsoever about towards anyone's individual health constraints. How can you sit there and tell me to be vaccinated, knowing that there can be side effects? Which one of you are going to choose your children that are going to, that could possibly die from being vaccinated? Which one of you are going to choose your grandma or your brother or your sister or anyone else? Who are you going to choose to say, well, you know, if we save a thousand people and one person dies from the vaccine, oh, well, well, let it be my child and see how that turns out for you. Let that be someone else's child and see how that turns out for you. You guys are making decisions that are not only disrespectful, but wrong 100%. All I can say to you is, as a black person, as a mixed person, the Tuskegee experiments is enough for me to tell you that you will not mandate a single thing for any minority. You want to give us Indigenous Peoples' Day and Filipino Day, give us Choice of Our Own Body Day. How about for the rest of our life? Because you do not, Mr. Steve or Mr. Sheffield or Mike.
Mr. Pryor, um, your time limit has been reached. Thank you for your comment. Uh, next is Deanna Oliveras.
Um, Shelby, give me a call. We'll organize. 703-9742. I highly am offended that you interrupted a parent speaking when the last time there was a Hispanic person talking about raping and murdering people and nobody interrupted them, especially with children listening. I, I find that, but then somebody brings up, eh, opposing, an opposition to BLM. Obviously a parent that's here every month, a biracial parent and you, you try to cut them off. It's because color only matters if you, we agree with you. And the fact of the matter is, when COVID first happened, how many surveys did you guys put out to parents? I know everyone's checking their Tinder right now. You guys are just looking at your phones. That's all you do on these calls, it seems like. See, how many, how many things did you send out to parents to ask us if we're going to do hybrid? If we're going to have our kids in school or if we're going to homeschool our kids or pull our kids? We had, we had surveys all week long, every week, every month. Because you were worried about money. Cause if we pulled our kids, you don't get money. But now this COVID funding grant is here. And whether we homeschool our kids, you still get the same amount of money. Whether our kids are in your seat, if we're still in your school district, you still get the same amount of money. And it's sad that it boils down to money because you are asking us what we want. And obviously if everybody disagrees with a few people that are talking tonight, you would think they would raise their hand. But are they raising their hand to speak? No, they're not. If they totally disagreed and we are talking like craziness off the walls, they would probably raise their hand to disagree. But are they? They're not. Because what we're saying, the few of us that are bold enough to speak are resonating with people.
Thank you, Ms. Oliveras, and thank you for being mindful of that two-minute time limit. Next is Liz Birch.
Hi, uh, yes, I do totally disagree with the
Hi. Yes, I do totally disagree with the parents that are speaking in terms of the vaccine. I do support getting vaccines for the kids. I certainly wished that we hadn't got to a point where we are going to have to mandate vaccines upon people's children who don't want them. I think that's a terrible state of affairs. What I would have liked was for us to follow the science and understand that I would like my child to be protected and I would like my family to be protected and I would like everyone's family to be protected here. And what we're dealing with is the opposite of that, but it's being twisted. And that's the sad part about this. As far as attacking people goes, this is going on and on and on. So what's happening here is now certain people are not following rules to care about other people's children. And now they're hearing that they're going to be forced to do something they didn't want to do, which was to take care of everyone's children, not just their own. I'm very angry about this. I think it's completely misdirected to attack the board about this. I, I'm sitting here listening to this, what I call BS, and I am upset about it. I would appreciate people caring about each other's children and not just their own. And that's all I have to say. And I've saved some seconds there for us to actually do some business that have to do with education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Birch. And next is Jay Willis. Could you please state your full name for the record? Mr. or Ms. Willis, are you there?
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
We can. Could you state your full name, please?
Yeah, it's John Willis. Sorry, I was putting on my microphone there.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time to talk. I've, I'm against the vaccine mandates. I don't think there's any zero, there's zero science behind the vaccine for children. You talk about the masks. Anything that comes up with the use, it always comes up at their low risk. There's absolutely no reason to force it on children, considering they are low risk and they have a 99.997 survival rate. There is zero science behind mandating this vaccine. It's not like all the others. It's previous. People have spoken on like, do a little research. And I always would encourage like to circle back on questions that people have previously, because they're not being answered. Like, you guys would never bring up natural immunity, you know, how many kids, thousands of kids, millions of people that have already had it. We never talk about the side effects. There are side effects that are happening. When you talk about zero side effects, that's the problem. You don't acknowledge it once. That's the problem. What is the incentivization on your side? Those are question marks for people that are paying attention. Okay? So what is going on? Like, why would you want to mandate a vaccine for children? It literally makes zero sense. It can hurt them, but they have a 99, almost 100% survival rate. There's a lot going on with myocarditis. There's a lot going on with heart inflammation, a lot going on with the the county spokesperson speaking up like they're doctors, Sandari Mase. Oh, when something's undetermined, how are you so certain it's not correlated? What's really going on? Why do you want to shoot up the kids? There's zero science and you don't have an answer. It's crickets, I guarantee it.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Next is Gerald Stahl.
Yeah, you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
You know, I mean, it's great that people are for it and against it, you know. In my opinion, if you want the jab, go ahead and get it. But, you know, everybody on the board, I can tell, agrees with getting that clot shot. But here, let me give you a little, little example of the side effects. My mother got that clot shot recently. And you know what happened to her? She ended up in the hospital with congestive heart failure. So when you guys are saying, get the shot and are all for it, I don't think you guys actually are looking across the board going, what about the people that are affected by this? What about their family? Because I'm sure if Omar or De La Cruz or Flores or any of you people in here had a relative that got that shot and was in the hospital dying, you might have a little different thought on the shot. But I don't think you do. I don't think you guys care. And as far as the last lady that spoke, saying that she's against it to protect the kids, listen to what I'm saying. I had a relative get it and end up in the hospital. So she wants to possibly get my kid to be hurt from this shot for her kid to possibly be safe? I mean, this makes no sense. You guys know me. You guys know I'm against the shot. It's never going to happen. My kid will be removed from the school. If it comes down to it, you guys all know this. So that's what I have to say about it.
Thanks, Mr. Stahl. Next is William Luvano.
Hi, good evening. Yes, my name is William Luvano. I have some, you know, thoughts on it too. I think it's good. I think it's bad. I think there's a lot of points made that, you know, yeah, there's a lot more research to it. Not everyone's a doctor. And when you do do your research, it's different vaccine for most. I'm not saying I'm not, you know, not for it and not against it. I have got the shots myself and I'm fine. And same thing, I've actually know people who got the vaccine and, you know, they were older and they died. So, I mean, I'm a little on both sides, but as far as for the kids, I think it's just an opinion for the parents. You know, and as far as going back to a few of the other parents that, you know, keep commenting on every, on every post, that's great. But let's just kind of stick to the time and get to the point and stop attacking everybody and just make the points made, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luvano. And President Fong, there are no other hands raised.
All right, thank you. Board members, do you have any other comments? Superintendent Trinell, do you want to close out with a comment on this?
Thank you for President Fong. We are certainly trying to keep every student and every family in mind as we move forward with the action steps that we take. And we appreciate everyone's feedback.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on to E five. This is a discussion item on S R three expenditure plan introduction, also draft. Superintendent Trinell.
Thank you, Board President Fong, members of the board, staff and community. We bring forward to you tonight information around our S R three expenditure plan. Tonight, it is a discussion. We will not be asking the board to take any action. We will be following this up with some feedback options from our community and our staff in order to assist us in finalizing the plan, which we will be preparing to bring back to you at the October 27th board meeting. And with that, I hand it over to Deputy Superintendent Edson with more information.
Thank you, Superintendent Trinell. If we could bring Joel Dantez over, please. I'll wait for him to join before I start.
Deputy Edson, it's not letting me move him over. Could one of our moderators try? I'm not sure. Zim's being a little bit glitchy for me.
I tried and it appeared. Like he's moving.
Here he comes.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, President Fong, Superintendent Ellen, members of the board. As Superintendent Trinell alluded to, the purpose tonight is to bring forward the elements of the S R three expenditure plan that will be brought back to the board at our next board meeting in October. In a few moments, Executive Director of Fiscal Services Joel Dantez will give detailed information about these funds that are in an approximate amount of about $22 million. It's important to note that these funds can be used on expenditures starting back in March of 2020 through September 2024. And as Mr. Dantez will also note, even after approval of our expenditure plan, we can reallocate funds based on new need or demonstrated need or a higher need than we originally anticipated. Through this process, beyond looking at singular one-time expenditures, we're also looking at the needs on a multi-year basis for programs and services that may need to continue past this year in light of what's happened with COVID. And during that, on the multi-year basis, understanding that there is a need now as well as a continued need in the future, this work of identifying the needs is continuing with discussion tonight through the plans over the course of the next couple of weeks, ultimately bringing it back to the board, as I mentioned. And then bringing back to the board any adjustments that we need to make with these funds until they are fully expended. I'd also like to note that the presentation that Mr. Dantez is going to share tonight has two new slides just for clarification that we've added, and we will discuss those slides as they come up. They are marked as new on the top left-hand corner, so they are visible. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Dantez to begin the presentation.
Thanks, Rick. Good evening, President Fong, Superintendent Trinell, members of the board. Thank you. So I'm going to share my screen with the host disabled participate share screen. Can you enable that for me?
You should be able to now.
Yes, thank you. Okay, can everybody see the presentation? Okay, so I'm going to, this is the S R three expenditure plan. This is an introduction and a draft of a plan we have that will introduce kind of the background, and then we have a draft of the plan included. So tonight, like, I said, we're going to go over the background of the plan, elements of it, go over the overview, and then a draft plan. And the draft is just, again, for people to get familiar with it, stakeholders to understand the the plan template and the instructions. So this is the American Rescue Plan Act. If some, if people recall, that was part of Biden's administration passed this plan. This is another coronavirus relief fund. We get, we've had a number of different coronavirus relief funds. We've gotten from both state and federal sources. This is the third federal source. All of our federal acts in coronavirus relief have come, the funding behind them have, has been the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. So this is S R three as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. The first S R plan, the first federal coronavirus relief fund was S R one and then S R two. Neither of those required an adopted plan. Now this is an adopted plan requirement. And I'll go into the other requirements. We got our funding based on the number of low-income students we have. And then they multiplied that by the per student rate that they came up with the total funding. So as you can see, Santa Rosa City School District, we have a combined elementary and high school district of about 22 million, a little north of 22 million, like Rick mentioned. And like he also mentioned, they can be used for cost dating back to the, you know, the first date of the pandemic back in March 13, 2012, all the way through September 30, 2024. There are three steps that need to happen in order to receive these S three funds. We need to submit our assurances to the federal, to the CDE that we will spend these in the restrictions, along with the restrictions that come along with them. We had to let them know that we had our safe return to in-person instruction plan. And we, and both those two actions were completed. And the third action that we need to do is we need to approve a plan, expenditure three plan by October 29th, 2021. So again, here's another overview of the plan. We have to approve our plan by the 29th. We also have to send it to the County Office of Education, who will review it, and then they will send it on to the CDE just for reporting period, you know, to make sure we're in compliance. This, this can be a living document, meaning we have, we, we adopt a report now with the information we have now. Everything is high in sight. And like we mentioned, this has through 2024 to spend, so things can change. We can live this document updated as we move on. Updates do not need to be approved by the county office. They don't, there's not required to be approved by the board, but of course, we would keep that involvement in our practice, I assume. Then but and the commencement of the, or at the end of this reporting, at the end of this S R three cycle, there will be a report, which is an annual update. I think that's every year we have to do the annual update saying, okay, here's how we plan. Here's our actual expenditures, and here's how we'll go moving forward. So there's a lot of information on this funding and how this plan needs to be managed, along with, you can find this, a lot of resources on the CDE website here, and one of the components of this plan is the CDE has issued an expenditure plan template that we followed, and that, that's kind of our basis of how we're going to submit this plan and, and is what we have in the draft here. So, you know, there are restrictions. It is probably the least restrictive of all the coronavirus funding we've gotten. But 80% of this is required to be spent on a broad range of services. 20% of it is required to be, to address the academic impact of lost instructional time. The S R three funds do not have a supplement, not supplant requirement, like some other federal funds come with. So the plan template and the expenditure plan, it is broken down into eight sections. You know, the first section is the title page, just put contact information, not much, not anything more to go into that. Then there's section two is other LEA plans referenced in this plan. So you know, we'll, we'll go over the overview, but taking a look at our draft plan that we put together just to give stakeholders and, and everybody a look at this to get comfortable with it, we included the LCAP, which is another related plan, because it gives students added instructional services. We also included our, the other COVID funding, which is a state funding from COVID, our expanded learning opportunities grant plan. And we kind of tried to relate that in these actions as well. And then also that same COVID safety plan. The COVID handbook is our latest one. Then there's a summary of all the planned expenditure. So we have that $22 million and we'll show actions and kind of relate that back and show the total amount of expenses included in the plan. Then the section four is community engagement. So, and we'll, we'll have to engage with our stakeholders. We'll be going over more of that in the plan, and Rick will touch on that as well. Then we go into section five, which is where we start to show what our actions are and what our budgets are and how we, how we can plan this $22 million. Section six is, okay, so, but let me, section five, the act, these are actions related to address continuous and safe in-person learning. So this section five has categories of addressing continuous and safe in-learning construction, and then we create actions in, in regards to those services we're providing. Then section six, actions and expenditure, address the impact of lost instructional time. So we'll, under that category, we'll list all the actions and budgets we have to address those. Section seven is, is, is another section where now we're able to put actions for any other use that we decide to use that are not specifically for address continuous and safe in-person learning or to address the impact of lost instructional time. Then section eight is, we go back and we look at all those actions and we show how we are ensuring interventions are addressing student needs. So that is the overview of the plan, the history and, and the plan. And we're about to jump into the, kind of the draft plan that we've included. But before I go into that, I want to just offer any questions about the overview, this funding, the history, anything, if anybody has anything they want to clarify. Okay, thank you. So, did I say a hand?
No, I don't see any hands.
Okay, so now. Okay, so now, Rick, do you want to touch on this?
Yeah, I'll touch on it. So so we added this slide is just a reference point. I talked about at the beginning of the presentation. Joel has also in other ways mentioned the intent of this. Really, this is an overview with large buckets of money allocated to certain areas based on need that we are identifying internally. It's also important to note, one of the plans that Joel mentioned, the safe return to in-person instruction that was approved on September twenty-third also was something that we were monitoring for impact of use of these potential funds, depending on the direction that the district went at that point in time. So with that, the following slides, specifically the sections referring to the S R three funding, five, six, and seven, I believe, are showing where there has been need identified. And then through continued work with our internal groups and some external groups to refine those into what would be the final plan that was presented to the board on the twenty-seventh. I will also note again, as I mentioned earlier, and as Mr. Dantos mentioned, this is a living document that we intend to use as needs change or new needs arise where this money can fulfill those gaps. So it may not seem as lined out as it could be. But it will certainly look different as we get the nuance of the details into some of those bigger buckets that we've identified. And with that, I will ask Joel to continue.
Yes. So again, these are, this is section two. This is in our draft, like I stated, we have, I did, we have referenced these plans in in the in the draft, and and the draft is connected to the board item as another attachment. But these are the sections and what these are the components in the plan that I've pulled out and put in here. So summary of plan, yes, or three expenditures, like we've had the twenty-two million, twenty-two two seventy-three, seven fifty. Total funds allocated in the plan for the first section of actions, which is safe in-person learning is about a little over eleven, eleven million, two hundred and fifty thousand. Total funds allocated in the plan for addressing loss and struggle in time is about a little over eleven. Total funds for any other remaining right now identified is zero, and we've we're, we'll have the entire S O three fund allocation budgeted in this plan. Community engagement, engage with students, families, administrators, teachers, principals, school leaders, and tribes, civil rights groups. We do have a Google Form Network compiling that'll go out tomorrow night or tomorrow morning. Rick also has other things he'll identify in a in a forthcoming slide that we'll get into more on community engagement, but this section will be filled out with the final plan in the draft plan right now. It hasn't got information in there, but it will be part of the draft plan. This was just, the draft is just to give introduction, look through the sections, get familiar with the plan. Again, we went over the section five, safe in-person learning, so we need to have staff on hand to be able to provide instruction in person. That'll include, you know, we, we knew that we were looking at increasing salaries for all of our staff, and we did that. We also have some future potential bargaining agreements that'll happen as a result of as we move through the COVID nineteen safety updates. As maybe something will come up with vaccinations or, you know, so we just, we have a budget there for for that. We have a budget for just maintaining the safety plan, and because this money dates back to the beginning of the pandemic, I think it's a good practice to try to use some of those funds to recap the costs that we've incurred in creating this plan. We have to use some money for P P E supplies for students and staff and visitors, have some budget to replenish those if we need to. Anything necessary to meet regulatory, new regulatory items. We have a a lot of technology needs still, you know, some technologies coming back damaged. We still need to reach to some students and teachers to enable teacher, student technology connections. So we were budgeting in that, something for that as well, school facilities repairs. Maybe some filtration, some new outdoor learning spaces there, there, you know, so as we work through the engagement process, we'll expand that. But right now, we've got about one point five million for that action.
Joel, if I may.
Yeah. Yeah, you had a specific one, and I forgot. I couldn't remember.
I I'd like to point out that, you know, with these funds on this slide, including the first one of recruit, attract, hire, and retain certificated and classified personnel, as Superintendent Trenell talked about earlier tonight. And as it's been mentioned several times, we do have a shortage. We have a shortage of teachers. We have a shortage of subs. We're looking at increasing sub rates. This money would go towards that in this bucket as well as additional classified staff that we may need on school sites or in classrooms to assist with learning on a daily basis. There, there's several areas in here that that Joel spoke to where we're allocating funds to ensure operational sustainability of our organization, including providing P P E and other necessary resources as they become needed, along with, as Joel mentioned, technology equipment that is continuing to be used and in high demand in our district that does require either repair or replacement at times, depending on age of devices and or how they are, how they come back unusable, ensuring that students have access to this as technology has taken a greater role in our district since the beginning of COVID with distance learning to the increased use of technology in day-to-day lessons as well throughout our campuses. So that is what this slide is talking about in terms of operational sustainability and tackling items as they come up. And I'll just go back to the demonstrated need of employees still needed, both in the classroom and at our school sites. Thank you, Joel.
Yeah, thank you. So then, moving on to the actions of impact loss instructional time. So we've so a broad category here, develop implement programs that meet the social, emotional, mental health and academic needs of students. So we've identified about a little over ten million dollars for programs that will be developed. And those specifics will be included in the final plan. And then we thought, well, we have to have some money for professional development to help our teachers and staff and administrators absorb the plan and and execute it. Again, a living document. The plan will include best information, but we can, we can update it as we move along. So at this point, there are no budget or ideas for remaining funds, but that's only in the draft. Again, ensuring interventions are addressing students when we break down the specifics, we'll have that included in the plan. But for now, if you can get familiar with with the instructions, the requirements, it'll just show what ensuring interventions are addressing student needs, oh, how that, how that is included in the plan. So then we have some next steps. Rick, do you want to touch on these?
I got this. So, yeah, on the previous slide, as Joel mentioned, and we're working with some of our internal groups right now to define the items that will be added to that, that that uses those dollars. This slide, S R three expenditure plan, next step or steps is, once again, talking about the survey that will be sent out tomorrow with people, giving people the ability to comment on specific areas that are addressed with S R three funds. We'll ask for responses to come back by October twentieth. We are also announcing and giving information tomorrow morning about a community forum on October nineteenth, five thirty to six thirty will be presented in English, and six thirty-five to seven thirty-five will be presented in Spanish as another opportunity for our parents and community to get more information as the plan continues to build out between now and then as well. As we move down this path, taking feedback from both meetings, comparing it with other feedback we will have received at that point and putting into the plan notable items and providing information about where people were at in terms of what they thought were as important for inclusion and bring that back for the board with the final plan on the twenty-seventh. With that, I will turn it back over to President Fong and Superintendent Trenell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edson, and I hand it back over to President Fong. Thank you to Joel and to Rick, Deputy Superintendent and our Executive Director. Allee has her hand up.
Thank you so much, Director Edson and Dantos for this great presentation. I have a couple of questions. ARPA is a super cool piece of legislation. It is very clearly an equity piece of legislation, has great language in it that, you know, these funds are to go to address the disproportionate impacts that that people suffer during COVID. And one of the things that we're doing at the County of Sonoma with regards to our ARPA plan is to really look at, you know, data around disproportionality so that we can understand how to make some targeted investments to address that disproportionality and experience. And so I would just love to know, you know, how we're also doing that at a district level and and how we're, you know, as a result of showing like, here's where the disproportionality was experienced. And that's why we are going to make the following investments that really address that disproportionality. So I'd love to know a little bit about what data sources we are relying on as we, as we focus our interventions and our investments. I would also say that I'm really grateful for, you know, the the community town halls and specifically grateful for you having a conversation all in Spanish. It is such a different experience to actually have a conversation in the language that you speak rather than listening to a translated conversation and trying to catch up. And and the reason why I think that is so important is because you know, so much of equity design recognizes the people who are closest to the challenge are also the people who are closest to the solutions. And so I'd love to just hear a little bit more as to how we are waiting certain voices, how we are recognizing that there is a need for us to really seek out and to elevate the voices of people who did experience that disproportionality during COVID. We've got some excellent data from our epidemiologists in the Health Department to really highlight that communities of color in Sonoma County really shouldered a much heavier burden from every single impact that was experienced during COVID, including educational impacts and impacts to families with kids in school. So so, yeah, I have, those are, those are a few questions. And I think that the last question is every jurisdiction throughout the country got COVID, got ARPA funding in some way. And so I would really love for us to think about how we're strategizing with other jurisdictions. So if the city of Santa Rosa, for example, is deciding to invest in and increase broadband coverage to address, you know, those access questions or those access issues that we all saw, then maybe we don't have to do that in quite the same way. Or, you know, if they're not doing that, then maybe that's where we step into that, into that area, that that kind of hole or that gap that exists. And so I just really love to know kind of like how we are strategizing across jurisdictions around what actions other people are taking with our ARPA funding so that we can be very strategic about not duplicating or not not recognizing additional holes that might be created by other jurisdictions' actions.
Thank you, Director De La Cruz. What I'd like to propose is that the staff prepare some information that we can bring back to you. We could share that information as early, some of that information as early as next week as a part of our forum and then also on the twenty-seventh.
Excellent, and I'm happy to offer any of the information that the EPs have and the Department of Health Services because the data is is powerful and it's it's heavy. And it really does, does show the ways in which specifically Latinx and indigenous language speaking members of our community really shouldered a very, a much, much heavier burden than other folks in our community. And it also is really interesting looking at, you know, even now, actually, some of those areas of disproportionality have shifted into our Pacific Islander and African-American Native American populations. And so it really kind of tells us how critical it is for us to look at disaggregated data around race and ethnicity in order for us to really be able to drive, you know, specific targeted investments that will ultimately benefit our system as a whole. But if we don't focus in that way, we actually are going to contribute to increase marginalization and time when we really cannot afford to do that.
Thank you. I don't see any other trustees' hands up. At this point, then, we're going to open this to public discussion, public comment. So if there are members of the public who are students who would like to comment on item E five, please raise your hands at this time. Students first has been our practice. Joshua Lewis would like to comment.
Good evening. Thanks for the time. I want to say I appreciate the work you guys are doing. I don't know any of you personally, but everything I've seen seems like you guys work out of a place of compassion and the best interest of our students. I'm a teacher at Elsie Allen High School, and I wanted to speak to the mentioned earlier of of technology with Mr. Edson's points, we're on point about about technology and coming and going and being returned and damaged. I represent a student who needs another hotspot to access homework from home. I know a lot of students who could use better Chromebooks or a Chromebook in general. It's a really good equity issue. I think it's been brought up before. And I just wanted to put that point out there as we think about money and needs that are out there. I appreciate the time to to get to tell you this so you can know something that's happening on the ground level. Again, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, and that wasn't quite a student comment. Gina Melville, I'm sorry, Melbourne, is the next student who raised their hand.
Sorry, I'm not a student. So if there's any students, go ahead and I'll put my hand back down, or you can put my hand down and I'll put it back up.
Actually, let's just open it for anyone who would like to comment on item E five. Anyone in the public who'd like to comment can raise their hands at this time, and then Gina, go ahead. So Gina, it's okay. Go, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I am a teacher at Montgomery High School. And I really appreciated the director's comments of the people who are closest to the challenge are closest to the solutions. So I just really want to encourage the board and the district to look and ask for teachers. We, we are in a crisis. I know everyone knows that. But you really need to listen to these site voices. We've had a lot of conversation among teachers around how we don't feel safe and that the, that the there's just a we're in in desperate times. We need, and and the bottom line is that we need staff, we need support staff. We're in the trenches. I feel like the admin, their hands are tied, where they're in the classrooms so that the kids who are in need and the teachers who are in need don't have the support staff. We don't have the administrative staff so that the secretaries who are out because they're sick are not replaced. So there's no one to replace them. And we don't see the district support. I know it's there, but we don't see the district coming into But we don't see the district coming in to like support us in this, like. There's no TOS subbing. They're they're in the district doing great things. But in the trenches here, we can't meet the needs of the students. We can't make them feel safe. We can't. I see the students who who have really fallen behind, but I can't do so much because. There's not the support that we need. So I love the data. I think it's really important. But I really see that we are seeing at the sites. The challenges that COVID has placed and we're trying to solve those, but our hands are tied because we just don't have the staff and the support. And I'm so thrilled that this, the Estlers is focused, the number one thing was about staff problems. But we need to see those problems. Like, we need to have faith that the district's supporting us tomorrow. By being there, by by making sure that you're visible because we're dying, like the teachers are burning out, the secretaries are quitting.
Ms. Melvin, I'm sorry, but you have reached your two minute time limit. Next comment is Sheila Walker.
Hi, thank you, everyone. I just wanted to go over a few points of this draft. First, I think I I'm so glad that there will be a conversation and not just a Google form. Because we really need to have meaningful discussions as parents and stakeholders in the district. Also, just a few other things that while looking at the plan. The folk should be, you know, addressing. Constructional time and also the social emotional. Well being of the students. And I have a few questions. The eight million dollars for. Recruiting and attracting. I'm just curious. I would really like to see how that is going to be broken out. Because as the, as you were presenting, Mr. Dantos, that. You mentioned that, you know, that things are being negotiated or I'm hoping that the district. Going to be relying on these funds to, what you approved was a three year deal for just the the teachers alone. Which came out to be about fifteen percent if I, by my memory. So. I I agree, we need to use some money to get additional staff, but it seems to me that we have staffing issues and those those positions are currently. Not filled, so we shouldn't have a hole there for money. I see the clock is ticking. I don't know why we would be spending a quarter of a million dollars on creating the COVID handbook. I could do that as a contractor or do it voluntarily for you for nothing. And I just think that's a lot of money for a very simple thing needs to be updated. The first thing that should have been in is number eight, ensuring interventions are addressed for students. So I would put that up first. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being mindful of that two minute limit. Next is Gerald Stahl.
This is more directed towards de la Cruz. You know, I I get on here and I speak and I tell you, you know, I'm part of the white population, but yet you must, you find it a must to constantly drill it in about how. Kids of color and this and that are affected more than other kids or it as if the other kids aren't affected, de la Cruz. You don't know what my daughter has gone through through this time. So when you speak about only the kids of color. You actually come across as just being a racist toward your own people and maybe a different group of people. So I I'm letting you know as a parent, that's how you're coming across to me. So if you could check yourself a little bit with that, it'd be great. Because there's a lot of people out there that feel that way. My daughter has a lot of issues. She went through hell going through this and she's white. So it didn't just affect certain groups and kids. I'm embarrassed to even tell you guys what happened to my kid. A lot of cultures keep it a secret and a lot of cultures don't. But as far as the white culture, they seem to just deal with it themselves. They hide it because it's almost embarrassing and they don't want to deal with it. But a lot of kids have done stuff. That isn't out there that you guys don't know about. So, you know, it'd be respectful if you can keep that in mind when you're speaking about kids of color and different races that. We're all the same here. We're not, we're no different. We're all, we all have kids that partake in this school system and it's just offensive to me. If you could, you know, tone it down a little bit with that. Thank you.
Thank you. And President Fong, there are no other hands raised.
Any other comments, board members? Okay, so you know, hands. Thank you again.
Yeah, I just feel free, you know, I wanted, I want to say that, you know, since last spring and the return to school, we've heard. From staff and teachers and families. At our meetings and they've been speaking out about the the needs. For more attention to increasing staffing for in support for special education. And so I just want to point, draw attention to section six. Seeing that ten million dollars and additional million dollars for professional development. I think this is great. I love to see that number because we're really focusing on those students that have been identified, that have been, you know, impacted. You know, probably emotionally. The hardest in the pandemic. And I know that this is a draft, so I just want to encourage us not to take any dollars out of this section. That's that's it.
All right. Superintendent Trinell, do you have any other last comments?
I don't at this time.
All right. So once again, thank you to Executive Director Joel Dantos and Deputy Superintendent Rick Edson. And we will be looking forward to seeing this again. And I know we're going to have forum, we're going to have more input and we are interested in that. So we'll see that. Later in October. Thank you. We're moving on to E six. This is a discussion, our first discussion regarding the proposed project stabilization agreement or project labor agreement. With the North Bay Building and Construction Trades Council and local unions and Superintendent Trinell.
Thank you. Good evening again for President Fong, members of the board, staff and community. Agenda item E six is to give the board the opportunity to discuss a proposed project stabilization agreement, also known as a project labor agreement. For Santa Rosa City Schools. Joining us tonight are Jim Traber, District Legal Counsel. Cherie Cabral, North Bay Building and Construction Trades Council. Jolene Kramer, Legal Counsel for North Bay Building and Construction Trades. And of course Deputy Superintendent Rick Edson, if we could please make sure that our guests are brought over into the space as I continue. A project stabilization stabilization agreement is a pre-hire collective bargaining agreement that establishes terms. And conditions of employment for construction projects. A PSA is designed to govern employer employee relations between prime contractors. Subcontractors and their workers in connection with construction projects. A PSA is a contractual agreement between the local education agency, a consortium of labor unions and a contractor. As outlined in the PSA included in the board packet. The PSA would require the unions to use their utmost efforts to use labor from the local area surrounding the district. Outlined in section thirteen point seven. The PSA would contain a no strike and no lockout clause and requires the parties to utilize and expedited arbitration process. To resolve related disputes, which is article five. The PSA would require contractors to pay employees in accordance with local collective bargaining rates. And in compliance with prevailing wage rates. This would include payment into employee fringe benefit funds. Article sixteen. The PSA would expire after a period of five years. That is section twenty seven point one. Under the PSA, the unions would agree to use their utmost efforts to include and generate interest. From the district's students relating to obtaining future employment in the trades. That is section thirteen point nine point one. The PSA would require contractors to utilize referral facilities maintained by the unions. If the unions are unable to fill a request for labor within two days, two business days, excuse me. The contractors are free to obtain work from any source. That is article thirteen. With that, I will now hand it back over to Board President Fong and members of the board for discussion.
All right. So this is a discussion and we're going to take questions right now. So raise your hand virtually and I'm looking at that list. I don't see any hands up.
Director Flores.
Go ahead, Clerk Flores.
Hi, so could you, let's see, he explained when I was reading this, what is a dual payment of benefits? Or payment of dual benefits? And what what does that entail? And how does that work?
I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Edson, but I don't know if we should then hand it over to some of our guests that are here tonight.
Yeah, did you mean, everyone? Director Flores, can you reference where you're reading that in the PLA?
Oh, my gosh. Hold on a second.
Or if Ms. Cabral or Ms. Kramer or Mr. Traber can speak to it.
I saw it in article sixteen, but I'm sorry, I read this over the weekend.
So if I may, unless Jim, unless you'd like to do it, Mr. Traber?
Go ahead, Cherie.
I I think what trustee Flores is referring to is the assertion on some, by some individuals that. Based on the language that's contained in section sixteen, that that could potentially create a situation in which dual payment of benefits would be paid. And we've discussed this at length. This is something that, while in theory, it could happen based on. The payment for health benefits and retirement benefits into a trust fund. It's not something that we have seen in the past with other project labor agreements. And so it is something that. As of yet, there's been no evidence brought, been brought forward on other project labor agreements throughout the state or in others, in other states. That has had this actually happen. So. It's a nonstarter. I would say that if in the instance that anybody does pay dual benefits on an equivalency base, please let us know and and we'll work through finding a resolution to that.
Thank you.
No other questions at this point? We can take public comment. Oh, wait. Nope. Okay. Let's open it to public comment.
So as is our practice, I'm going to lower hands and ask that only students who'd like to comment on this item E six raise their hands at this time. So students only. And it looks like William Louvano will speak first. Once the students have spoken, then we'll ask for the public to raise hands. Everyone else in the public. William Louvano.
Hi, and thank you. Um, again, I'm for the PSA, the PLA agreements. I myself came, I'm born, raised in Santa Rosa. Actually, President Fong, you helped give me my diploma when I graduated. Um, and yeah, yay, cool Vikings. This is a great agreement. You know, it's local, you're trained. I've worked at some of the best facilities in the Bay Area. Gone to school out here. JC and I want to stay local. I want to work local. And this agreement brings good opportunity for a lot of people. And good training. It works best for workers and for for companies because you have trained workers with a good set of skills and. You know, not all of us were cut out for, you know, higher education, but this education we have with the trades, trade school. Ends up becoming just as equivalent to college level. And if I was to take a few more courses, I could actually get more degrees. So. Doing this PLA, this PSA, I highly recommend it. It's worked really good for me, for my family, and it helps me stay local, helps me keep close to home. And just being a local here, I'd really appreciate if you guys really consider doing this, not only for me, but for everyone else that. That looks forward to working, you know, in the community. So again, thank you guys for everything.
Thank you. And once again, this is a reminder, this is item E six. And if there are any students. We're thinking about Santa Rosa City School students who want to comment on this item, please raise your hands at this time. Our next comment is Chris Sindelar.
Nice. Hello, how's it going? My name is Christopher Sindelar. I live in Santa Rosa. I am a state and federally approved apprentice and I'm enrolled in the ABC NorCal Carpentry Apprenticeship Program. I've been in apprenticeship now for about two years and I really enjoy what I do. If Santa Rosa City Schools approves a project stabilization agreement. I will not have the opportunity to work on projects in my community. Because of some of the language on article one point six that specifically excludes me and other local apprentices. I'm hoping to remove the language and allow all apprentices to have the opportunity to build their community. I want to work in my community. So thank, thank you for your time. That was my. That was my comment.
Thank you very much. And this is the public comment for students first. Next is Gina Von Kao.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Gina, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Hello. Good afternoon. Hi, my name is Gina Von Kao. I'm a member with Local eighty-three with the painters and. The drywall finishers. I've been with this local for five years now. I went through the four year apprenticeship program. I'm going to be graduating in a few weeks, actually, from my apprenticeship program as a journeyman. I think it's. Will be like beneficial and stuff for us to work locally because, you know, family is everything to me. And then like, you know, throughout my career and everything, I've been traveling out of town and stuff. And I would like to spend more time with my family and I would like to save more gas as well, you know, like money and everything. You know, I grew up in poverty and everything and the apprenticeship program has saved my life from all of that. Now I'm able. To provide for my family, making good wages, good benefits, my health and welfare. My retirement plan that, you know, I'm looking forward to and everything and also. And the great thing about the apprenticeship program is that I'm able, I'm able to go to school for four years. And be debt free comparing, comparing to going to college and stuff where you're able to go to college, but. Once you graduate from college, you know, you're in in depth with. With student loans and everything and that's the benefits of, you know, being in the apprenticeship program. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for being mindful of that two minute time limit. The next student with the hand raised is Joe Lubas, and then we have another student, Kevin, and. I'm going to open it to everyone who'd like to comment on this item now, but we'll take Joe and Kevin first. So Joe Lubas, you're next.
Hello. Yeah, I'm just calling today to speak in opposition to the. Project stabilization agreement, one way in which, you know, it it's been proven to be, you know, costly to taxpayers and the public. At the Santa, Santa Rosa City College, they had their Burbank Auditorium. Project. You know, which is, which had a project labor agreement. You know, the project ended up being one hundred and fifty-seven days behind schedule. And while it was originally contracted for twenty-eight million dollars. Cost, you know, or change orders accumulated to a cost. to a cost, ultimate cost of thirty-one point eight million. So it was originally contracted for twenty-eight million. It had a, it ended up costing thirty-one point eight million. In short, you know, this district needs to be project labor agreement free so that taxpayers aren't given a raw deal. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Kevin. Kevin, could you please state your full name for the record?
Yes, hello, my name is Kevin Maximan.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say I was born and raised in Sonoma County, went to McDowell Elementary School, Kenneworth High School, or Kenneworth Junior High School, Casa Grande High School. Joined the world's finest Navy. After my honorable discharge from the US Navy, I found out about Helmets to Hard Hat Program in the Joint Apprenticeship Program. Signed up for the Joint Apprenticeship Program through Helmets to Hard Hats Program. And I was able to acquire many skills in the trade, skills that will be with me for the rest of my life, skills that I do pass down to the next generation of apprentices. I'm truly thankful for my, for the program's existence. The Joint Apprenticeship has turned my life around, has allowed me to move back to my hometown where I grew up and be with my family and have my own family grow in my hometown, working locally, working locally and less time in traffic and more time at home with my family. I really hope the board ultimately adopts the PLA, once they have discussed it and give someone else the same opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Walker Rotherham.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Walker Rotherham and I'm an IBW Local five-five-one apprentice. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm here because I was born and raised in Santa Rosa. I enjoy living here and have a great upbringing in this community. I grew up growing through the Santa Rosa City School system. I feel that I'm very well educated because of it. After I graduated high school, I had the opportunity to join Local five-five-one, become an electrician's apprentice. Because of this career path I chose, I can live and build a future for myself in Sonoma County and hopefully one day send my kids to the Santa Rosa, Santa Rosa City System. I am in favor of the school board signing the project labor agreement with local building trades. You signing that agreement will give local guys and girls like me opportunities to build our community and the schools we take pride in, while also giving us the needs to live and stay in Sonoma County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And thanks to everyone who's being mindful of that two-minute limit. Next is John Medina.
All right, am I on?
We can hear you.
Right on. Thank you. Thanks for everyone for having me tonight. I want to say thank you and I want to salute everybody on their patience on this board. I think it's a very thankless job. I wish I had the time to do this myself with my school district. I used to be from the North Bay. I had to relocate. Years ago, I lost my house, but I grew up in the Petaluma area, familiar with Santa Rosa, went to Santa Rosa Junior College. And I commuted for years coming down here to the Bay Area, to San Francisco, to Hayward, where my training center, where my apprenticeship was. And this was back in nineteen ninety-nine. I did it for ten, twenty years, wondering why I was driving by job sites that I wasn't on and had to go all the way down to San Mateo where I now live and met my wife luckily and, you know, and live in a good life and was able to do more, got involved with my local. And I was one of those guys like Kevin who went to Casa Grande, go Casa, Gauchos, sorry, San Rosa people. But my military friend there, Kevin from Casa, I was you. I was the guy driving by those jobs for ten years, wondering why, I, you know, why, why couldn't work at them? And now I have a difference. I'm a business agent with Sprinkler Fitters, Local forty-three. This is my opportunity to tell this board and everybody listening that there are opportunities that are being created by these PSAs, PLA, any kind of community workforce agreement. It's for the community. It's for the people that live there. It's an opportunity for this board to engage people that have not had an opportunity to get into the trades, to find a pathway to the middle class, to find a pathway to, you know, a career after these, these after high school, you know, you guys take them to high school, we take them on to beyond retirement. I just wanted to say, thank you for everybody. I see I got seven seconds. I'm sorry for all the negative comments tonight. I wish I had twenty more minutes to go off on that, but I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Ruffin. Could you please state your first name for the record?
Yes, my name is Ruffin Rome.
Thank you.
And good evening, members of the Santa Rosa Board of Education and everyone else in attendance. Again, my name is Ruffin Rome and I'm a flooring installer by trade, a father of two school-aged children and one up-and-comer and a lifetime resident in Sonoma County. I am also a commander in the California Army National Guard, assigned to the battalion located in Santa Rosa on Armory Drive. During my service in the military, I have been on multiple deployments as a construction engineer. This led me to transition into the civilian construction industry. And in two thousand fourteen, I was introduced to Jason and Zach Ellis, the owners of Ellis Flooring, a local shop in Santa Rosa. They are also both Sonoma County residents that have lived here for over fifty years. Jason served in the Navy as the commander of a submarine and was injured during his service, entitling him to the DBVE status that Ellis Flooring now holds. Ellis Flooring is also comprised of all local workers, most of whom live right here in Santa Rosa. While working for Ellis Flooring, I was put through the Joint Apprenticeship Program, which helped me get certifications and training that I needed to be an asset to the local flooring companies. Transitioning from the military to civilian life is never easy. But thanks to the Joint Apprenticeship Training, Ellis Flooring and the local flooring community in the North Bay, I've been able to succeed and stay close to home. I am strongly advocating to adopt the PSA for this district because I, like many other local workers in the area, will experience a greater quality of life, knowing that we are working close to home and contributing to the greater good in our home, Sonoma County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stephanie Hall. Stephanie, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can, we can hear you.
Perfect. My name is Stephanie Hall. I'm a journeyman electrician out of Local five-five-one in Santa Rosa. I attended school in Sonoma County and currently live here. I went through the electrical apprenticeship and even worked on construction sites while being eight months pregnant, all while making the same wage as the men next to me. Upon taking time off to bond with my newborn, I didn't have to worry about losing my job or healthcare. I'm able to stay here because of the wages I made as a union electrician and think everyone should have the same opportunity as I have. And with PLAs, this is possible. I have two small children of my own. They too will be going to the same school as I did. Being able to allow more locals to work in their own backyards closer to families is very important to me. So I'm in favor of this PLA. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Leah Edwards. It looks like Leah has to be promoted into the panel to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Leah Edwards. I'm a fourth-year apprentice with IBW Local five-five-one. I've lived in Sonoma County for over thirty years. I'm a single mother. I have two teenage daughters with whom I'm their sole financial support. Before joining the Electricians Union, I worked three jobs, often working nights and weekends in order to provide for my children. Now, as a union member, I'm able to work just one job in order to provide a good life for my family. Next year, my oldest will be going off to college and I'm happy to say I'm able to give her that opportunity. Being a union member has changed my life in many ways. I'm now able to purchase a home in this beautiful community that we live in. And of course, you've noticed over the last twenty years, our community has grown considerably. And with that growth comes many new construction projects, renovations, remodels and other projects to help support that new growth. Our local building trades provide quality skilled work to get the job done right. The local labor union members are not only members of the construction trades, but they're also members of your community. Who better to provide the labor for your projects than those who live here? As you consider your decision, please remember that the union members in support of this PLA are your neighbors, we're your friends and we're your community. We want what all people want, fair wages for quality work. This PLA supports that right here where it matters in our hometown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Miguel Garabey.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, my name is Miguel Garabey. I'm, I'm from Napa and I've lived here my whole life. My kids are going to the same school as I have and I'm with the ABC NorCal as a second-year electrical apprentice. And if the Santa Rosa City School approves the stabilization agreement, I will not have the same opportunity to work on projects and community because of the joint language on Article one point six that specifically excludes me and other local apprentices. And I would just like the same opportunity to be able to work close by too, instead of having to drive across the bay or wherever else and drive past sites as the rest of the people that grew up around here. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Next is Rocky Sparks. Rocky, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, yes, my name's Rocky Sparks. I actually moved here about, into Santa Rosa about five years ago. I worked various jobs and then around Santa Rosa. And then I joined the Joint Apprenticeship at Local four-eighty-three, Sprinkler Fitters. It has dramatically changed my life for the better. I have steady work. And a lot of it is out of town. I wish I could spend more time. My son goes to Mark West. And I spend about three hours a day in the car commuting to work. I would love to spend more time in my community with my son. He's in sports, so I would love to have the opportunity to help coach and do other things like that. And I would have that opportunity if this PLA is approved to be able to live and work closer to home. It'll just open up a huge opportunity for us. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for keeping your comments under two minutes. Next is Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Apprentice. If you could please state your name for the record.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Joshua Betancourt. And I'm an apprentice at the Local thirty-eight Plumbers and Pipe Fitters JTC in Santa Rosa. I am a Santa Rosa resident and graduated from Montgomery High School. I have been an apprentice now for two years. I was a camp counselor at Camp Canoga in Lake County. It would really mean a lot to me and to other apprentices like me to have a project labor agreement in place that uses taxpayer dollars to create more benefit than just the buildings themselves by giving priority to local workers who happen to be the taxpayers that fund the district bond program and to make it so that we can work close to where we live.
Good evening. My name is Curtis Colas and I'm a Santa Rosa resident and a graduate of Elsie on High School. And I'm a parent of two students who are currently in the Santa Rosa school system and two more who eventually will be in a few years from now. I'm a third-period apprentice at Local thirty-eight Plumbers and Pipe Fitters. I sincerely hope you will end up with the project labor agreement at the Center of the City Schools. I'd love to be able to work here locally and come home and spend time with my family instead of commuting and be an active part of our lives. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you both. Next is Max Bell Alper.
Hi, good evening, school board. Really appreciate you all taking the time. My name is Max Bell Alper. I'm the Executive Director of North Bay Jobs with Justice. We're a coalition of thirty-two different community and labor organizations based in Santa Rosa. And, you know, we, we're here to strongly support the project labor agreement. This is something that we believe is really critical for our community here. In particular, we focus on the workers who've been excluded, who've been left out from receiving good living wage jobs with benefits that they can support their families. And so we really see that the project labor agreement is an opportunity for the, for the school board here to do, to do the right thing that's going to help our community and to ensure that there's more good jobs created right here in our community. This is even more urgent as, as, as we face, you know, the effects of climate change and wildfires and COVID, which have all disproportionately impacted low-wage workers, immigrant and indigenous workers. And, and the PLA is something that we can all be proud of, to use public dollars for, for public good. And so appreciate you taking the time to discuss this and hope that you'll also support the PLA as we are and all members of our community are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Gerardo Magana Lopez.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome, great. My name is Gerardo Magana Lopez. My friends call me Lalo. I'm a first-gen, first-generation immigrant. I was lucky enough to have the resources and guidance to gain my US citizenship less than a half decade ago. I've worked non-union as an electrician and union as an electrician. So I've been on both sides of the fences. And I can tell you right now, joining the union was the best decision I've ever made in my life and this PLA agreement would really benefit workers such as myself and like myself and help us stay one, local and two, support us in the benefits that we have that we as union workers and just workers with representation have. All our benefits such as a pension, I didn't have non-union or health insurance, I didn't have non-union. You know, I'm a part of the small, small percent of the country that is not scared to go to the hospital, that is not scared to take a sick day. And, you know, PLA agreements like this support that. You know, pre, pre-union and pre-representation as a worker, you know, if I, if I hurt myself, I was in trouble. The bill was on me and there was no support. Now that I'm union, I can, one, afford to buy a home in the area that I was raised in. Two, I, you know, I have great benefits that I think every American should have and I think every all of us should agree on that. I think everyone here should agree that we all should have all the benefits that, I mean, I have is health insurance and all that. And if you support this, you know, you'd be backing your word on, on that. And so I am in, I'm pro PLA. That's that. Thank you for your time and patience with all of us tonight.
Thank you. And next is Scott Littlehale.
Good evening, folks. My name is Scott Littlehale. I'm really pleased to be with you. I'm a researcher with Carpenter's Local seven fifty-one, which is based in Santa Rosa. I want to highlight tonight, research published recently in a report by Smart Cities Prevail that's titled Training the Golden State. The research in the report's really clear. Apprenticeship is an escalator out of the working poor and into the middle class to California Joint Apprenticeships, which are the product of joint commitments by contractors and unions, invest hundreds of millions of dollars more in their joint programs than employer-only unilateral apprenticeship programs. Three, wage outcomes for joint apprenticeship graduates are better compared to unilateral apprenticeships. Across California, nine out of every ten active construction trades apprentices are trained by a joint apprenticeship program. And in some crafts and in some regions, like in Sonoma County, that percentage is even higher. Of two hundred and fifty-three resident Sonoma County residents active in a carpenter Of two hundred and fifty-three resident Sonoma County residents active in a carpentry apprenticeship program as of January twenty twenty-one, two hundred and fifty-two were enrolled in the Joint Labor Management Program that Carpenter's Local 751 proudly partners with. Only one resident of Sonoma County was, as of January two thousand and twenty-one, enrolled in the employer-only Associated Builders and Contractors Carpentry Training Program, according to the state of California. The construction industry has a racialized income inequality problem. I'm proud to say that our apprenticeship program has fifty percent participation by people of color. So if you want to achieve the goals of equity and workforce development, I urge you to support PSA when it comes back to later this year.
Thank you. And once again, this is item E6, Public Comment, Two-Minute Time Limit. Next is Abraham Castaneda.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Hi, good evening. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to address the board. My name is Abraham Castaneda. I'm currently a third-year apprentice in the IBW Local 551. Santa Rosa has been my home since nineteen ninety-three, when my parents and family moved here from a short stay in Merced after immigrating from Mexico. I have had, I have attended Steel Lane Elementary, Santa Rosa Middle School, and Santa Rosa High School along with Santa Rosa Junior College. After growing up working in the family restaurant business, I applied and worked as a correctional deputy at the Sheriff's Department for fifteen years. After fifteen years of service, I decided to start a new career. I was a laborer for a few months while I got my Class A license and drove tractor-trailer before applying and being accepted into the apprenticeship program. I could say I am greatly appreciative of the opportunities to maintain and continue working here in my community. The apprenticeship program has allowed me to raise my two teenage kids, maintain a reasonable financial income, and maintain my health and medical benefits. I am excited to continue to grow and thrive in this new career. Brotherhood and community are deep-rooted in the IBW. With your help approving the PLA, we'll continue to maintain work and reasonable living wages for my brothers and sisters current and future. We take pride in our work and our craftsmanship. What better way to continue to support our members and our community, supporting their families, than to approve the PLA? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Cameron. Cameron, could you please state your full name for the record?
Cameron Webb.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm opposed to this because of the fact of some of the wording in it where it states that only union workers, local union workers are to be chosen in this. And I'm a non-union, and by choice, I'd rather be non-union. And I don't think it's fair that it's biased one way. I was born and raised here, been here for forty-three years. And yeah, I would like to have opportunities to work here. And by this not allowing non-union workers, it's going to push me out away from this area. And I don't think that's really fair. And I think if we change some of the wording to where it allows non-union workers to be in this and, you know, both union and non-union can work on it, that would be fine. But as far as the wording goes currently, it would be excluding me and a lot of my friends that are also local in this area and companies that have been here for decades. They wouldn't be able to use local workers and, you know, they wouldn't be able to bid on their jobs just because they're non-union. So that's where I stand with that.
Thank you. Our next comment is Kevin Dayton.
Yes, Kevin Dayton, Labor Issue Solutions, calling, actually feeling a little foolish calling in here because I'm looking here, you have a union lobbyist and a union lawyer here on this panel discussion and answering your board questions. I mean, can you at least pretend to be a little bit impartial here as you go about this process? Yeah, you probably don't want to deal with that double payments issue because it could be a little uncomfortable. Those non-union workers pig into their 401Ks. You know, if they went and worked under a PLA, their money would be going to the union trust fund instead. So that would be an issue and a problem. So when the union officials sitting here at this panel say, don't worry about it, you don't want to get into that if you like the project labor agreement. One thing that might be of concern to you as you think about families, I heard a bunch of union people say that they're going down to San Mateo or San Francisco, going by local job sites. It sounds to me like you've got a lot of non-union contractors and workers probably working on projects at your very school district. And it seems like you'd like a massive transformational change on who's working on your projects. Have you looked at all into who's been working on your projects, how these projects are going, where the workers are coming from? Or are you just going to do this? I know many of you filled out your candidate questionnaire and said you're going to support project labor agreements. But you know what? You might want to, at least for the public interest, look a little bit more into how this is going to change your contracting and bidding process before you proceed with this exciting new approach to your construction projects. It's a shame you have these union people here on your panel. They're totally biased.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton. Next is Nicole Gearing.
Good evening, President Fong and members of the Santa Rosa School Board. Nicole Gearing with Associated Builders and Contractors have been advocating for workers' right to be able to work in their own communities for fifteen years now. And the project labor agreement that was presented to you does not allow equal opportunity for all people in the community to be able to build their community. We operate apprenticeship programs in several trades. You heard from a few of our apprentices this evening. They just want a shot. They just want to work in their community. Obviously, they would like to their kids' sports, have language, and that would exclude these subjects in their community. And it looks like in Section 1.12 that you want to cover all projects or virtually most projects under this project labor agreement. Section thirteen, you're not even allowing for any of the core workers in your, of the contractors. I will clarify something that was said earlier that non-union contractors can't bid. They absolutely can bid. Under the provisions of this, I would be bid if they tell them they have to sit in the dugout when they have to pull people from the hall. And then if somebody is not available from the hall, then they can use their people. And these contractors have the contractors plan that they pay their 401K for their workers into, and they're not to receive those plans, those paid into the union, in Article sixteen, that all payments for fringe benefits need to go into the union trust funds. And so that's why where this double payment issue comes in, under the 401K, the contractor wants to take care of his workers, and that's what he does. So he would keep them whole and would continue to also pay their 401K so that they can have their retirement benefits. You know, this adds up to about twenty dollars an hour. And on a five hundred dollar job, five hundred hour job, this can add up to a significant amount of money lost. So please, please reconsider this draft document and let's work on something. Let's get a community engagement process to give opportunities for all workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gearing, and gave you a couple extra seconds there because there was some audio trouble. Next is Josh Yarnell.
Hello, board members. My name is Josh Yarnell. I attended Hidden Valley Elementary, Santa Rosa Middle School, and the class of two thousand and six Santa Rosa High School, Go Panthers. I journeyed out of the joint apprenticeship through Operating Engineers Local Three with my knowledge base from the Santa Rosa School Board, school system, and training through the apprenticeship. It has allowed me to get married, start a family, and provide a living wage for us. I've been blessed to work locally for a local contractor and have worked on many school projects within Sonoma County. Working on these projects has allowed me to spend more time with my family, especially has allowed me to take my infant daughter to the doctors instead of sitting in traffic like some of my other brothers and sisters that have talked. I hope this board does adopt the PLA because I've gained so much knowledge and experience on these school jobs, on these school projects. And adopting a PLA will allow future apprentices the opportunity I've had to learn all these many aspects of our trade. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Karim Sanchez.
Hello, my name is Karim Sanchez. I'm the Executive Director of the North Bay Organizing Project. I'm also a parent of a student at Santa Rosa City Schools. North Bay Organizing Project represents a coalition of over twenty faith-based communities, environmentalists, students, and community organizations. And I want to express my support for the PLA agreement because it would mean the creation of more good jobs here locally, union jobs, and we're always in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eric Kristen. Eric, are you there?
Can you hear me?
No, we can't.
Can you, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry. This is Eric Kristen with the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction, statewide organization that was formed twenty-three years ago by union and non-union construction firms solely to oppose discriminatory project labor agreements. Questions for you tonight. Why during the passage of your bond wasn't a project labor agreement ever discussed with the public before you asked them to take their tax money and use it to build projects? Answer, because project labor agreements are so controversial and wasteful and discriminatory that it would have been problematic for you. That would have been the time to discuss this, not after the fact. Second question. What problem is this solution seeking to correct? What is the problem? Specifically, what are the metrics that you've laid out and defined as being problematic? Local workforce, eighty-seven percent of the local construction workforce, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, is non-union. Choose to wake up on a daily basis and work in a union-free environment. That's where the American construction workforce is today. Is that a problem? You're going to have a local hire agreement that excludes most of the local hire? Highly problematic. Third question, why would you ever consider something that forced a non-union construction worker to pay all of their monies, benefit monies, into a pension plan and health and welfare plan they'll never benefit from? Is wage theft a progressive value suddenly? Is that something you've even researched? Why would you ever read of something like that? That's what you're being asked to sign on to. Fourth question, why would you agree to something that explicitly excluded young men and women in non-union state-approved apprenticeship programs? Is bigotry and exclusion suddenly a progressive value? Have you looked at any of this? Have you researched it beyond being told this is something that big labor special interests who told you to support this? Other than that, have you looked into the efficacy of them? These are problematic. Do your homework, do the right thing, and take your time on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is John McEntigard.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, President Fong and board members. My name is John McEntigard, and I'm lucky enough to represent the many men and women of IBW Local 551. That would be the local electrical unit here in Santa Rosa. I would like to talk about PLAs and specifically healthcare and pensions associated with some of the unions. Some of the arguments you hear are that the benefits that are paid to healthcare and pension trust funds will never be utilized by the non-union workers because they're not part of the union. That's just simply not true. Now, IBW Local 551, we've worked with several contractors who are not signatory to our collective bargaining agreement, meaning they are non-union contractors, but were successful in being awarded electrical bids on PLA projects. And that means that they have workers who are qualified for and were able to enjoy our healthcare plan long after the PLA project that they were on had ended. They were allowed to bank any hours worked over the required hourly amount that you need to have healthcare and utilize those banked hours until our healthcare account depleted. We have one such issue right now. The project finished earlier this year, but the worker is able to continue to enjoy full healthcare for himself and his whole family on our plan. That will continue for him until his banked hours are all used up. The only complaint we usually hear is that they wish they had the same healthcare everywhere they go because it is so superior to what they have become accustomed to. Pensions are another issue usually thrown out there. In our pension funds, we have provision. If you make under a certain amount, you can request all of your pension to be paid back to you if you are non-union on a PLA project. There is no vesting period. When you work, you earn a pension, and that pension is yours from day one. You're either going to get it after the project is complete, or you're going to get it when you reach retirement age. And for us, that is fifty-five. And if there are any non-union electrical apprentices out there who are in Santa Rosa driving by these projects saying, I'd love to be on those projects, I would like you to call me, please, directly. IBW Local 551 is in Santa Rosa, and we welcome you to come in and join our ranks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Steve. Steve, could you please state your full name for the record?
Yes, my name is Steve Chrisdani. Good evening, President Fong, trustees and staff. I'm the lead coordinator for the Plumbers Joint Apprenticeship Training Program located here in Santa Rosa, California. We have a little under a hundred apprentices currently going through our program, of which twenty-five percent are graduates of city Santa Rosa schools. And thirty-three percent live in Santa Rosa. Sixty-eight percent of our apprentices are persons of color. We are the only state-approved plumbers, pipe fitters, and HVAC apprenticeship program located in this local area. I have been a lifelong resident of Sonoma County with most of those years spent in Santa Rosa. In fact, I'm a graduate of Piner High School, class of seventy-three. My father before me was a plumber and was a small business owner. I have watched as the opportunities in the North Bay have shrank for the students like those I teach at the JTC and the increasing number of people who have to commute to other parts of the Bay Area for jobs. The students I teach want to be able to remain in the North Bay, be active in their communities, and be with their families. I thank you for consideration of using a project labor agreement for the city of Santa Rosa school projects. Agreements like this will allow apprenticeship programs to expand in capacity and to create career opportunities for the young men and women that are the future of our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Keith Woods.
Let me do a sound check. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
To trustees and other school board members, do these words sound familiar to you? Santa Rosa taxpayers should know and be disturbed that their school board is considering a policy that's likely to drive up costs for school improvement projects. You recognize those words? When I read the editorial that this came from yesterday morning, I thought about all of you. And I thought, oh, my God, they must be tossing their breakfast at this point to see the real facts about a PLA. What you probably haven't heard from of the PLA supporters. Hopefully, you learned something out of the editorial. If you didn't read it, I'll bring each of you a framed copy. It so clearly points out what's so wrong with PLAs when they're applied to public works projects that there's almost nothing else to say. I do want to bring up two quick points, however. This past year, when your county board of supervisors were reviewing plans for a major construction project, their own staff, not us who are against PLAs, their own staff in a report told the supervisors that placing the project under a PLA would add somewhere around three point five million dollars in additional costs. Do you have that kind of money to waste away to support the unions? Is that really what your function is? My second point is, when the junior college was considering PLAs, we showed them a survey we conducted of not only union but non-union firms, and we asked them three questions. Do PLAs lead to higher costs on a project? Seventy percent said yes. Are there fewer bidders on PLA projects? Seventy-five percent or more said yes. Are you less Are you less likely to bid? Over two-thirds of people said yes. Bottom line, do you represent taxpayers or maybe your special interest supporters? I sure hope you know that everybody's going to be watching.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. And with that, President Fong, there are no other hands raised.
All right, I'm going to call on Jill McCormick.
I would just like to make a motion to extend the meeting for until eleven o'clock.
I will second that.
Okay, so that's motion by Jill McCormick, seconded by Ed Sheffield. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, so an hour. Okay, got it. Thank you. Clerk Flores, you have a comment?
Well, I mean, I just want to say thank you to everyone who showed up to let us know your your feedback. We take your feedback, you know, to heart. I just want to say that. There were a few comments. I just want some clarification. You know, we had a sense. It sounds like our local commuter college had a PLA agreement a while back. Now, I'm wondering if anyone on the panel could talk a little bit more about that and did it go over cost? Did it go over time? I like to know more details about that. Is anyone here able to discuss that?
Clerk Flores, sorry, or President Fong? May I?
Please do.
Can you help? Okay, can you hear me? Clerk Flores, I just would like clarity on the relevancy of that information on this topic. Tonight in reference to Santa Rosa City Schools.
Oh, it's a PLA agreement. I just wanted to see where, you know. I want to hear what. I'm taking too hard to what what everyone said, you know, pro and cons, right? So and I want to hear what happened with our local commuter college. If anyone here knows about it, right? If not, I'll do my own research. About it just because I'm curious because it's right down the street and.
You know, ever, I don't think anyone can speak with authority about that. No one's prepared to do that, so I don't want to have any conjecture, so.
Is there anyone? Is there anyone else that can talk about it now?
Clerk Flores.
It looks like Omar.
I will say that that is a North Bay Building Trade, Building and Construction Trades Council PLA, so. We know exactly what took place and what was being referenced. That project had seventy percent local hire under on it underneath of a PLA. And there was a speaker who mentioned that it went severely over budget. I think it should be fairly noted that the over-budget and overtime frame wasn't related to the project labor agreement. It was related to the fact that it was a hundred-year-old building. And once they got inside of the building, much like is typical with with older remodel construction in old buildings. They found that what they thought they had wasn't what they had. So they went through a serious process of having to rework the architectural and engineering drawings to make those accommodations, which resulted in cost overages. So the cost increase was not directly tied to the PLA, nor was the delay in the construction. It was completely tied to. Design and that design was tied to the age of the building and the complexity surrounding the issues with the age of the building.
Okay, so Sherry, I'm going to stop you there. Thank you for that short answer. I would prefer to hear from the JC themselves. Director Flores, do you have another follow-up question?
No, I do not.
Second question?
I do not at this point. Thank you.
I'm going to call on trustee Medina.
I mean. You know, it's kind of a part of responding to the issue. I think Mr. Christensen talked about us doing our homework and, you know, part of the homework was researching things like that. So like we didn't know about the delays in the Burbank artotium due to the pipes and the wires being five feet off from where the plan stated. Also delays hit wrong due to supply issues, the curtain rods and stuff, that's fire measuring. And being able to provide those products, try contracting and had to delay stuff. So those were delays that were not tied to the PSA. So I think to say that. I think I say that to demonstrate that we do our homework, we research. And it's important that we we make these decisions, not, you know, lightheartedly, but I think we do it. For the purpose and benefit of our community, for the purpose and benefit our workers and the betterment of everyone. I just basically want to say that. I've looked at this issue in general for many years in different many different jurisdictions. And I am very supportive of it. So I just want to make sure that the work that's been put into this agreement. I just want people to recognize that I support it. And emphasize the fact that it's a five-year period and it'll allow us the opportunity to. Evaluate after those five periods and decide whether it's something that we want to keep going based on the data that comes from any work that is done under this agreement.
Trustee Medina, I'd like you to, I'm curious, why do you support it so strongly?
Why do I support it? I think it's good for workers. It's good for our community. It provides. The local hiring apprentice apprentice opportunities, I think are very important. And I think that ultimately. It allows, one of the things that's very important to me is that workers, I feel that workers. Aren't in a situation where they're more likely to report a problem, something that that might be going wrong. That might be an issue of safety or concern. I think they're more they're protected in these situations when I think they're more likely to report something like that. In in something that if they don't, in the long run, it may cost us more. But that aside from the many other benefits that I see. Around worker wages and local hire and supporting good, good, good jobs that offer great benefits. I think those are some of the main reasons, but I think. This is the first time that this district looks at something like this, I think. Will have the opportunity to evaluate it and I think. I could only go based off what I think and I assume from. From the data that I have in front of me, and I think allowing us to try it and do it. What will give us that opportunity to to see, okay, is this factual? That will be able to benefit. Will it do something positive for our community? But without implementing it, we can't, we won't be able to have that data. We won't be able to look at that. And I think that it'll be positive. Everything that I understand from it feels that it'll be positive. And so I like us to try it out.
Director Sheffield?
Yeah, I'm going to speak a little bit in support of PLAs, PSAs. I call them PLAs. I'm old school. And I have done research on this since my time on the board, so I have looked into it. I've had many conversations. I'll get into that in a minute. But President Fong, you know, why, why do I support it? I think in this agreement, one thing that really stands out is that workers would be dispatched from local hiring halls. And this means that these are our people, people who live in this community. People who we heard from who have kids that go to our schools. So I think that it could potentially improve the lives of the students and the health of our community. That's one reason why I support PSAs in general. I think that most importantly to me, that I think PSA has established a really good work condition. And that the people. Your neighbors, your community folks, they would choose to work under these conditions, particularly the safety and. Secure employment benefits. So, you know. How long have I been looking into PSAs? How long has this been an issue that's important to me? In two thousand sixteen, my first year on the board. With you, Lori, we went to the California School Boards Association Conference. And at that conference, there was a. Panel discussion on school districts that engage in PSAs. And these were school board trustees and superintendents, and they were weighing the pros and cons of adopting them. And my takeaway from the discussion was that school districts that do enter into these types of contracts. They often do see cost savings because they avoid the lengthy delays. And they eliminate uncertainty, which. You know, that that uncertainty, that holding pattern, that not knowing, that all amounts to dollars. I also learned at that conference, the, you know, that PSAs have, you know. This has been going on for decades. This isn't anything new and that they have steadily increased. And so, you know, I think since the district has started to engage in these discussions, going back to last winter, behind-the-scenes work that. That Rick and Jim have been working with with Sherry and and the labor folks. That that, you know, that school districts have, they're increasing. In the number who are engaging in PSAs, not decreasing, and they don't seem to be moving away from them. LA Unified was the first K through twelve to enter into a PSA contract, and this was over twenty years ago. In West Contra Costa, they adopted shortly after. And in addition to the largest school districts, LA, San Diego, Long Beach, there are dozens of large and medium. School district districts that have adopted them too. And so, you know, I went and looked at a list. I looked at all these different PSAs from around. The Bay Area alone, the Greater Bay Area, Alameda Unified, they adopted theirs in two thousand sixteen. Antioch Unified in two thousand thirteen. Berkeley Unified in two thousand eleven, Berriessa, two thousand fifteen, Fairfield, two thousand seventeen. Fremont. Unified Fremont High School, Hayward Unified, Martinez Unified, Milpitas Unified, they just re-adopted theirs a year ago. Mountain View, Mount Diablo, Oakland Unified, Pittsburgh Unified, Sacramento, Salinas. San Francisco Unified, San Leandro, San Mateo. South San Francisco just goes on and on, Stockton, Vallejo, West Contra Costa, and these are just the Bay Area districts. I mean, my list goes on for about forty more that are around the state. And my point is that if PLAs cost school districts and municipalities. And taxpayers so much money as the opponents have said, why do so many public entities continue to engage in them? If these are such bad decisions. Then why doesn't there appear to be any regret or distress or fiscal fallout from these agreements? And, you know, it's not just school districts going into these contracts. It's the public sectors. They're being used all around the Bay Area, water districts, community colleges like the JC, BART. San Francisco and Oakland airports, Bay Area hospitals, cities, counties, and on and on. And and these are large contracts for public projects that use. Dollars overseen by entities like us with fiscal responsibilities. And again, they're not expressing regret. They're not showing financial losses from these decisions. So I'm going to stop talking, but I'm going to leave you with this. The debate over PSAs, in my opinion, whether to support or oppose is politically, ideologically. That's the argument. It's not about fiscal or budgetary. It's because. I think that if it was, we would see that the cash-strapped public school systems in the state of California would not be able to engage. That's my opinion. I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Ed. Director De La Cruz.
I want to raise my voice to join my colleagues in support of this PLA and PLAs generally. For a lot of the reasons that both Director Medina and Director Sheffield mentioned. But I do think that this question of our fiduciary duty over public funds goes exactly to the reason why PLAs are a good idea. And union workplaces are safer. Union workplaces provide benefits. Union workplaces make sure that workers who get hurt on the job are able to to either heal and rest. Or to move into a different job if that's what they need to do. They they provide increased wages. They allow for us to also help to meet our climate change goals by not making people drive all over the Bay Area. And and, you know, as my colleagues have mentioned, they do result in benefits to the quality of life of kids in our district. And to have their moms and dads home, to have their moms and dads working locally. To have their families be connected in that way and connected to building within their own communities feels very meaningful to me. And so when I think about our responsibility over public funds. I do feel like that we need to come from that very broad perspective of understanding what it means to be a fiduciary in our larger community. I never want to be, you know, the Walmart of school districts where we pay people such wages that they are required to go onto public benefit systems. If anything, what we are doing by entering into these kinds of agreements is increasing the quality of life for our entire community as a whole. And so, you know, I'm grateful that I get to speak after Director Sheffield. But my homework has resulted in many of the same conclusions that his did. And we are not alone. We are not an outlier in considering a strong PLA. And we are joined by many other excellent thinkers across our state and country and even within our own jurisdiction. And so, in fact, we would be outliers in the opposite direction if we were to fall prey to a politicized understanding of the power of. Not only unionized workplaces and union workers to, again, increase quality of life in our community. But also to this politicized version of what PLA is actually doing. So I. I am also. I think of my own experiences as a kid, as a union kid and as a as a daughter of organizers and recognizing firsthand, seeing. What it means to be represented and to have a workplace, a voice in your workplace. And have a sense of a collective power in the in the face of of something that can very typically be very kind of lopsided. I really support, you know, unions and union density in our community, and I feel like. Hearing the the voices of power and pride and workers who found themselves and found their power as members of their union feels so beautiful to me. And something that I really want to support and I want us to be able to kind of peel away some of the of the things that make these. These decisions feel controversial, but really when we when we bring it down to the barest bones of it, we're talking about. Decisions that value people for their labor and allow them to work in workplaces that do the same. So I join my colleagues in offering. And very enthusiastic support for this agreement, and I thank our partners. Because I also think that when you bring an agreement that has. Agreement, right? I mean, this. That also means something about the partnership that we have been able to build with our labor partners. And as we think about, you know, moving forward in this larger relationship and is in these projects as we move forward together. This is a very good start. We don't have a lot of space between our values as a district and and what it means to be working with our labor partners. And so I feel like that sets us up for success in lots of different ways. But especially in making sure that these projects get done, that they got done on time, that they get done with excellent work, high-quality work and well-paid workers. Who enjoy their workplace and feel like they have a voice on their job. So adelante.
Thank you. And I have some questions. Because. I have also studied this as it came up looming, and when I was running for office back in two thousand sixteen, Ed Sheffield, you and I. You know, I was asked, what do you think about project labor agreements? Would you support them? And at the point in time, I knew nothing about them and I. My answer was, I'm going to have to research that. And I have been researching that and I have been reading quite a bit about it and talking to people. Thank you to everybody who's talking to me. But some questions. What I heard tonight is that it's kind of like. Binary. You either hire union, good wages, good work, you know, all that. Or if you don't hire a union, don't have the PSA or PLA, you're not going to have that or they're not going to be local. So I'd like to ask our deputy superintendent. In our projects and our larger projects right now in our schools with bond money. Do we have any idea of the workforce? Is that, are they local? Are they local companies? Who are they? I mean. How's that go?
I don't have stats prepared for tonight, but there are. Projects that we've run with many local construction firms. Um, labor comes from Santa Rosa area. It comes from outside Santa Rosa area, depending on the project, the company and the, uh, amount of work, uh, that each company has or the successful bidder has at that time where, uh, workforce comes in. But I know that it's been spread, uh, spread out amongst, uh, many different firms in the area.
Thank you, Rick. And I also understand that in a PLA, we can specify. And I know that, I understand that even with the PLA, even if it's in the agreement, there will be good faith effort to hire local, depending on who's here. Um, I understand that. I had so many questions. There's so many questions. Um, I did a lot of reading about the cost overrun. So that was one of the things about cost overruns and, and it's, it's going to cost more. I actually cannot pinpoint that that is absolutely true. You know, some people claim it is. Some people claim it is, but in the research I'm doing, also academic research I'm doing, that hasn't been found to be true. So I'm going to kind of put that off my, off my brain. Um, I am concerned that we did run our bond and we did not mention PLA's and people entrusted us with these bond measures. And yet we're going to possibly be spending the rest of the bond money with a PLA. I don't know. Um, Deputy Superintendent Rick Edson or Anna, your thoughts on that?
Thank you for the question. Um, personally, not having been here during those discussions, uh, what I can share with you, you know, as my, in my thoughts as superintendent, is that we need to really, um, weigh what our overall, expectations are. Um, and certainly we don't want to be misleading, um, of our community. Um, perhaps that wasn't an integral part of the conversation at the time. And based on the times, it is now. Um, we may want to go back and review, uh, what our messaging was at that time so that we stay true to the messaging, um, at that time. And perhaps, um, think about what our messaging would look like going forward if we were to entertain a new bond, for example. Um, would that set a different precedent? So I, I would just want to ensure that we are being consistent um, and that we didn't make promises that we couldn't keep, um, at that time and that we would maintain consistency.
And the last thing I'm going to comment on is that we have a fiduciary duty to our taxpayers, but we also importantly have, um, to keep what is good for Santa Rosa City Schools, what benefits Santa Rosa City Schools, what benefits our students and our mission of public education. And so I am going to, um, I'm looking at this agreement and I'm reading very closely. I'm looking at, um, 13.7. Local hire, uh, in the agreement, it's in the interest of the parties to facilitate employment of local area residents in the construction of any project. This would be not only Sonova, but Lake Mendocino, Napa, Marin, right around us. And, um, is there a way for us to, to, to monitor that? Um, I'm asking, uh, superintendent or deputy superintendent.
I will defer to Mr. Edson on this.
Uh, we, we could certainly, uh, monitor, uh, persons who worked on jobs by zip code, uh, and have that data to show where hires are coming from, either in Sonoma County or surrounding counties, as noted uh, in that section 13, uh, or from other parts, uh, outside of the, the counties listed.
So that would be 13.8, reporting and data collection.
Uh, tied to 13.7.
Okay. Then I also want to point out 13.9, student involvement. That is a very big paragraph for me. The unions agree to use their utmost efforts to inform, include and generate interest from the district students relating to obtaining employment in the trades. And they, there's a, there's some examples of how to do that. So I'd like to visit, if we have this, I'd like to make sure that we visit that regularly and that it's not something vague, not just agree to use utmost efforts, but that we actually have reporting and we, we analyze that, um, more than once a year. Can we add that? A metric?
Yes, we can discuss that.
Director Medina?
Well, um, two things. I think in terms of that metric, I don't think that would be anything that we need to include in some agreement. That would be our own separate thing that we would maybe direct staff to do, um, outside of that. Um, but I think, you know, following up, um, you know, you asked me why I support. I'm curious, like if we had to vote today, I'm curious, President Fong, you know, like, would you support or oppose? And so why or why not? Just to kind of get an understanding of where everyone's at.
To be truthful, Omar, I've been thinking about this for about six months now and it's back and forth for me. I see great benefit. Um, I also a little worried about who are we excluding? Um, I also understand that you don't have to be a, a union contractor to, to bid. But I do understand you need to have, uh, workers who then join the union. And I know there are benefits to that. So, um, I also need to continue to hear from our community. It's very important that we hear from our community. So we're taking input tonight and, uh, we will take input again next week or in two weeks before we vote. And that's important for me to hear. I see benefits. But I also wonder about, okay, so what about the people who are going to be excluded from bidding? They also live here. They also are business owners and contractors here. They hire people who work here as well. That's a big question for me.
Just to clarify, we can't exclude anyone from bidding, correct?
Right. Okay. Any other comments? Superintendent Trinell, any last things? Or Deputy Superintendent Edson?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We're looking forward to, um, bringing this back. And, um, I think the date, Anna, is October 27th? No?
Sorry. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Our final item on E is seven. And thank you, um, Jim Traiber. Thank you, Cherie, for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your consideration.
E7 is a discussion. We are going to be discussing the self-evaluation protocol. Anna May, I can speak to this? Are you going to speak to this? Okay.
Yes, President Fong, you are welcome, um, to go ahead and speak to it.
So per, per board by law, well, that's a tongue twister. I'm losing my voice. We are to evaluate ourselves once a year. And this is this instrument that we've used before, had a couple tweaks in it. And this is in preparation for our board session next week that we will be doing work as a governance team to, how are we doing? You know, just kind of take a good self, look at ourselves as a governance team because we know that good governance team does a better job for their, their school district. So there's a PDF here for you to look at. We will be issuing that to you later tonight or probably tomorrow. It's going to be a Google form survey, I believe. And I'm going to ask all of you board members to please complete that by, I'm sorry, Superintendent Trinell, which date was that?
If they could please complete it by Monday, the 18th.
And then we will use it as data for our discussion on, uh, Wednesday's board meeting, special board session. So, questions on that?
Can we just get, um, either Superintendent Trinell or President Fong? Could you please just send us an email, uh, tomorrow or something with the document and reminder of the due date? Just so it's there and we got it and we got it done. Thank you.
Okay. Good. We'll, we'll remind you and thank you. Um, no questions? Call for public comment?
If there are any members of the public, students or anyone else who'd like to comment on item E7, please raise your hands at this time. And I see no hands.
All right. So that is done. We're moving to the consent items. And let's just make sure which consent items we're looking at. We're looking at consent items 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8 for consent. 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8. All right. So moved by Omar Medina, seconded by, um, every Flores. Can we have that vote, please?
Director Medina. Um, Director Medina, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I said aye.
Thank you. Director Flores.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. Um, we also need to do F1. Approval of absent board members. We have one, uh, tonight that is ill. So can I, somebody move that, please?
Move to approve absent board members.
Second.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. Thank you, Betty. Um, we are going to pull five. Superintendent Trinell, would you just speak to that for a second?
Thank you. Yes. We realized that with the posting of the agenda that the SHADCO design and construction contract was on the summary sheet, but the contract itself was left off of the attachment. Um, and so we're asking to pull the SHADCO, uh, design and construction and ask the board to, uh, if it's at the pleasure of the board, to consider the other contracts that are on the list for tonight.
All right. Can I have a motion for that, please?
Uh, move to approve F5 with, uh, the pulling.
With the exception of the
Yes.
SHADCO contract.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That was seconded by Omar Medina.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Medina. Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. All right. Let's hear, um, discussion, uh, uh, public comment on, uh, consent eight. Approved summer of 2022 roofing HVAC projects. No, excuse me. Nine. We pulled nine and 10. Approval of contract North Bay organizing project.
So, President Fong, um, do you want to hear public comment on nine or nine and 10?
We'll take just nine first.
Okay. So this is item F9. We had a few members of the public who asked that item F9 be polled. If those members would still like to comment at this time, the ones who asked that it be polled only, please raise your hands. So F9, those who asked that it be polled only will speak on this. And our first comment is Deanna Oliveras.
Hi. Um, I was kind of hoping I wasn't going to talk first because after that last session, I feel like I want to blow my brains out because that's just crazy that we all have to sit through all that legality stuff. But, um, you probably have gotten a few emails today. And there's quite a few of us that are upset about North Bay organizing project being on a consent item because they are religious, they are political, and Omar is on the board of both. So I personally think that's a conflict of interest. Um, I don't understand how it could be a consent item. I think that they're, they're under an umbrella of the Unitarian Church. They meet on Mendocino Avenue. They teach sexual education. They want to do after-school clubs on Santa Rosa City School campus. And there has been no input from the stakeholders. So no parents have gotten a say in this. And I think it's very disrespectful and upsetting. And I think that you should ask parents how they feel and what they want to have on campus as after-school clubs. If you go on North Bay Organizing Projects website, they're hiring youth participants to do political phone banks. And that is a political thing. So if you're going to set this precedent, then you also need to realize that when other religious and political organizations, maybe like the Catholic Church, want to do things on campus at Santa Rosa City Schools that you might not agree with, then I think you should be ready to allow this because it's social justice, justice. And it's political and it's religious.
Hello?
We can hear you, Sheila. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't, uh, hear. I apologize. Um, yeah, I didn't know a whole lot about, um, this particular organ, uh, organization, the North Bay, um, organizing project. But I did, um, look around a bit today just to learn a bit more. And, um, it does appear to me to be a political organization. Um, I, I see that there are some, uh, already connections and affiliations with some of our schools. And, uh, I'm not quite sure why we need an MOU, um, for this, um, if that's even necessary. And I do believe that, um, Trustee Medina has a conflict of interest and should have abstained uh, earlier in the meeting from this, um, topic. Um, his position is under the, uh, his, his working position is under the umbrella of the North Bay organizing project. So, um, I would like to see him abstain of, from voting or commenting on this, um, item. And I do agree with the previous speaker that, um, the, the board should be cautioned to, um, uh, any, any sort of political interest, um, religious affiliation. Um, because you could open the door for, um, various groups, uh, expecting the same treatment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Manny Morales.
Yes, um, my name is Manny Morales. I'm the youth organizer with North Bay Organizing Project and, uh, I want to, uh, call in and support of having this MOU in place to continue the support and, um, advocacy of our young leaders. The idea is to strengthen the Latinx Student Congress Network by way of, uh, strengthening the relationship with some of the student-led organizations on the campuses. I think there is a misconception around what the North Bay Organizing Project is. And, uh, I think that the two previous comments, um, are detrimental in the efforts to support our, our youth, um, in building and establishing safe spaces and establishing clubs, uh, that will work towards student advocacy. So, um, I would like to, uh, you know, thank you for this opportunity. you know, thank you for this opportunity and hope that this is approved.
Thank you, next is Gerald Stahl.
Yeah, I I disagree with it too, Omar, you know better than what you're doing. And, you know, to do this, to not have parents aware of this whole situation is kind of, you know, it's almost like you're trying to pull those sheets over somebody's head and not let them see what's going on here. You know, it's not right that you're affiliated with that group, and then you sit on our board and have your opinion on it. I think you shouldn't be able to vote on anything concerning it. You know, it's just not right. And then, Anna, I don't know, I I tried to call you a few times, you haven't gotten back to me. And this was an issue that I was trying to call you today about, and you haven't returned my phone call, so it's an issue with me, I don't approve of it, and I do expect you to drop me a call so we can talk about this, because it's a conflict, and I think all parents should know what's going on here. That's it.
Thank you, next is Krim Sanchez.
Hello, Kadeem Sanchez, the executive director of the North Bay Organizing Project. I just want to say thank you for your consideration of this MOU. Many of you are familiar with the North Bay Organizing Project, our core principles are around leadership development, we want, we work with various community members in their development to be civic actors, and it's exactly what we do in our youth organizing program that we're talking about here. Manny Morales is an amazing mentor and advocate for youth, and his work is essentially to work with clubs that are on campuses to provide training in our leadership development theory. And and to connect youth and in these clubs to community resources to help them achieve their goals. We, yeah, I just wanted to say that, and again, thank you for your support. Also want to clarify that Omar Medina is not on our board. We are a five oh one C three, and he does not sit on our board, I heard that as a comment. Wanted to clarify that.
President Fong, there are no other hands raised for F nine. President Fong, you're.
President Fong, you're on mute.
Man, I said this whole thing, it was brilliant. This is consent item, I see no other hands raised by the board members, so I need a.
Director Medina's hands raised.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just also wanted to reiterate with, what Kadeem mentioned, I am not a board member, I used to be. I think that ended in twenty seventeen while I worked with county's member, SCIU, and I was president of MBOP for a couple years, but I'm no longer on that board. But I did also want to clarify something else that I heard somebody mention, somebody mentioned that MBOPs are under the Unitarian Universal Church, which is not true, Unitarian Universal, so this is a member organization, just as many other religious organizations are a part of. Which was one of my favorite things about MBOP as a whole, that it brought many people of all ages, different perspectives, different religions together, and allowed us to be a part of forming a community, organizing around various issues. For me, it started with immigration and education, which ultimately led me being a part of this. I think it's a valuable organization, and I love the work that they're doing with students, getting students civically engaged and involved. And I'm very supportive of this work, and and especially with Manny Morales, doing some of that work, who who used to work for Santa Rosa City Schools, and and students love, and he does great work, so I'm supportive of this motion, well, this MOU.
I will add that we don't allow anybody to come in and indoctrinate our students, we don't let teachers indoctrinate our students, we provide opportunities for students to gather research, talk to different people, make critical decisions on their own, with their own thinking, so I support every organization that comes in to help us think about things. We certainly have had churches come in and help to meet with groups, sponsor groups. You know, faith-based, that kids who want to, no one has to, so it's just part of being part of a community, and again, public education where we present kids with things where they get to make decisions and build their confidence and their efficacy. All right, so do we have a motion yet for this?
I'd like to move the approval of the contract with MBOP.
Okay, so moved by Everett Flores and seconded by, I think that was Alagria, okay, great.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi, did you hear me?
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you. Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Medina.
We think you said I.
I I I completely am very supportive of this contract, but just to avoid any possible misrepresentation or appearances, I will abstain.
President Fong.
Hi, and I would just also add that board members do not need to abstain unless there's really a cost benefit to them, or right, so, and this is a free, this is not, this is not costing us anything, but thank you, Director Medina. We're moving on to a consent item ten, proposal for Cal Shape work. Superintendent? CO2 sensors.
For President Fong, this was an item that was pulled by the public for discussion.
That's right, that's right. Let's open that discussion, please. Public comment on consent item ten.
So members of the public, if there are any in the meeting right now who would like to comment on item F ten, please raise your hands at this time. And Sheila Walker has her hand raised.
Thank you again for your time. I just wanted to raise a couple of issues or concerns. Why wasn't this, this price or this monies, why weren't they attached to the MOU? As stated here, it says for the MOU with the SRTA, the school is required to provide the CO2 sensors per classroom, so this is going to be a cost of around one point, one, actually, almost one point three million dollars for the net cost to the district. I think it's great if we can improve the air for everyone, but you know, this is a quite a, quite a number, the range from one point three to three point three million dollars, and it wasn't included in an MOU that was probably on the consent agenda. So that's my comment. I I I think at this point, I think most parents are, you know, may just be giving up and pulling out of the school district, because when we sit here for four and a half hours, you've talked about pretty much everything else except educating our kids. It's very frustrating, so, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, and there are no other hands raised.
You know, I'm going to comment to Sheila, thank you for hanging in there, you absolutely did hang in there, and it's important to you, and I'm going to say thank you. I sure wish we could talk about teaching and learning a lot more. We would need, like, you know, two meetings a week. Okay. So let's take a, I'm going to take a motion on this one.
Move to approve F ten, approval of proposal for the CAAB A four one Cal Shape work, including installation of the CO2 sensors.
Second.
Okay, so that was motioned by Joe McCormick and seconded by Everett Flores.
Director Flores, or sorry, Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
President Fong.
Hi, thank you, everyone. We're moving on to the approval of the minutes, G one, a special board meeting, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Move to approve G one, approval of minutes, the special board meeting held on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Joe McCormick and seconded by Clerk Everett Flores.
I'll agree, I did that.
Okay, I'm oh for three, don't, don't wreck my role right now, ever.
You gotta speak up, girl.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
President Fong.
Hi. G two, approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held in September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Move to approve G two, approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Yes, motioned by Joe McCormick, seconded by Alagria De La Cruz.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Medina.
You muted yourself instead of saying hi.
I said hi, sorry.
President Fong.
Hi, thank you, everybody. Board member request for information. Superintendent Trinell, we are going to be hearing back from CCLA, CCLA Cook title name merger.
Yes, yes, you will.
And I would like to make sure that our board members take a look at the information items, particularly the independent study comparative data. How we're doing on independent study, right, that's something that's very important to us, want to see how that's going, so thank you for that data. And Superintendent Trinell, any last words?
Thank you to everyone who's still with us tonight, and everyone who was on this evening. We continue to keep students at the center of our work. Sometimes it doesn't feel like that, there's some of the conversations that we have to have. But there are so many moving parts when it comes to the work that we do in order to have our system run, and so, yes, we certainly look forward to bringing more discussions around the learning that's happening, and the ways that we are working to serve all of our students.
It is ten forty-three PM, and I declare our meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, good night.
Thanks, everyone.